Do the flags salute?
Salute. I think Tracey's going to share her screen this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And so, um, for those of you who are joining us perhaps for the first time today, um, when you want to make a comment and you call in, please raise your hand by pressing star nine at the beginning of the item you're interested in speaking on. Then when your number is called, press star six to unmute yourself and you will then um have the uh moment, uh three minutes to talk to the board of supervisors. When you have two and a half minutes passed and 30 seconds left, you will hear this sound, hopefully. And that tells you that you have 30 seconds left to finish your comments. At the end of that timeframe, uh you will be muted and it's the same for everybody because we like to keep consistent rules. Occasionally it is not three minutes, but generally that is what we choose to go by. So at this time, I think I would like to ask our C A O Hayes if there are any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass. There is one modification. Item D 11 has been pulled for discussion.
Alrighty, so um we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as modified.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
We will go out um and uh speak to the um have public comment on the consent calendar. And I did want to remind folks, um we do have a couple of retirement resolutions and I think some people were trying to call in on that, so this would be the time to to uh to do that. But we only have one hand up at the moment, so now we have two. All right. So our first hand up um is seven five one one. If you can press star six to unmute, you'll have your three minutes to speak. Seven five.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning. This is District Attorney Maggie Fleming. Thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize Hildy's amazing years of service for Humboldt County. I'm here with her sadly we're not visible on the screen. We attempted to do that, uh but Hildy would like to address the board of supes.
Okay, hold on just a moment, um DA Fleming. Is there a way we can um I get them to zoom in or do we just? I guess we can just do it by verbal. I was looking at our Tracy, yes Tracy?
Um she was just sent the connection, so if you want to take other public comment, we can come back to District Attorney.
Okay, so Maggie will come back um in just um DA Fleming will come back in just a moment. All right, so the next person who has their hand up to speak on the consent calendar is zero one one six. And if that's you, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. In a phone interview with New York Times, Dr. Fauci stated that he changed his public stance on necessary vaccination rates for our community based on both science and a gut feeling. Western Journal writes that Sweden suspends Moderna shot indefinitely after vax patients develop crippling heart conditions. The Washington Post states, you're not fully vaccinated, you never will be. After December 31st, 2021, the CDC was granted the U S FDA for emergency use authorization for CDC 2019 novel coronavirus real-time PCR diagnostic panel. Additionally, 36 other tests have been removed from the FDA emergency list and should not be distributed. The CDC encourages laboratories to consider adoption of a multiplex method that can facilitate detection and differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and influenza viruses, meaning the PCR test cannot tell the difference between COVID and the flu. They only detected genetic sequences, not individual viruses, as per definition by the inventor of the tests. A substance called Luciferus is in the COVID jab patents on Moderna's website. Could Health Officer Hoffman describe the purpose of Luciferus? This substance in the jabs? Cleared as safe for use in humans by the FDA, what does it really do in the vaccines? And Austin, Texas, March 5th, 2020, a federal lawsuit filed by the nonprofit Informed Consent Action Network, ICANN, the CDC failed to produce specific studies to back up its long-declared assertion that vaccine given to babies in the first six do not cause autism. The fact that the CDC was making statements about vaccines without studies to back it up and that Dr. Fauci claiming that his decision-making was based off science and gut feeling should be an eye-opener for soup's that we are in desperate need of a second opinion on every decision made by Health Officer Ian Hoffman, whose only solution is to follow national and state COVID protocol without question. We need critical figures in critical positions in these critical times. We cannot afford blind adherence to failing national and state policy based on poorly orchestrated central planning. Thank you.
Okay, there's one more thing I wanted to add. Yep, there's one more thing. I was also wondering about and COVID transmit through the animal populations as well, so are we gonna start contact tracing like local stray cats eventually? Or you know, are we gonna vaccinate all herds of cattle? Other other questions for Hoffman here. That's it anyways. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will now go um, well, we'll go to seven zero three three since we're on the phones now and then we'll go to DA Fleming when we come back. So seven zero three three, if that's you, press star six to uh star six to unmute. And welcome, you have three minutes.
Oh, I thought I had three. Hi, this is Dr. Caroline Connor. You know, I I'm I'm a little bit sad for the person who just spoke because, you know, their information is flawed. You know, I understand that um their identity is all about not getting vaccinated, but you know, the reality is, if you look at even the Scandinavian countries, um all the Scandinavian countries um that have a very high vaccination rate, um their COVID numbers are very, very low and their economies now are are back in booming. Trying to fight this concept of of the need to vaccinate when millions and millions and millions and millions of people have been vaccinated with no major issue is, you know, unfortunately, it's just blinded by whatever conspiracy and identity crisis that you have. I'm 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 absolutely for what Dr. Hoffman is doing. He's following good science. I mean, it would be nice if this guy could get on to um uh forums with the FDA and hear them reading, you know, 3,600 worth of pages of of good scientific evidence. So uh we really need to follow vaccination recommendations because that's the only way we're going to get out of this. And and as far as the concept of of vaccinating cats, I mean, we do know, I mean, every one of the pandemics in the last decades, um unfortunately have come from the uh zoonotic animals. And yeah, we're, we have to watch out for that and so we have to be prepared for the next pandemic. Now, the reality is, is that it didn't come from cats, they came from, you know, strange animals in 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 marketplaces in China, but um the fact that we have environmental change and climate change, yeah, there there are, that's how these viruses are getting to people. And so, you know, yeah, we're not going to vaccinate our cats, but we have to be ready for the next pandemic of some uh of some virus. So anyway, I just wanted to uh um make a a comment of my absolute in agreement, in accord with what Dr. Hoffman is doing. Thank you.
Okay, Caroline, and you you did have three minutes available. Sorry if it didn't sound that way. All right, and the next speaker is one one seven two. Press star six to unmute for the consent calendar.
Um, I'd like to first call, oh, my name's Catherine Gabitan, and I'd like to comment on the woman who just spoke. The fact that she just um kind of tried to slander the person before um didn't seem like a very good like logical argument. And I just want to urge that woman and also the Board of Supervisors to please tune in to the Project Veritas exposes that are happening, which are undercover interviews of Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson scientists and executives that are all saying really um damning things against the COVID-19 vaccine. And so maybe other people that are calling in are just also opening their perspectives and their eyes to more broad information besides mainstream media. And Project Veritas is a very credible news source. They break news and undercover investigations um all the time. And so if you're not informing yourself fully about all the potential um, you know, perspectives that are out there, then you're doing yourself and the people in our community a disservice. So Project Veritas, I hope that you look that up. Also, as far as conspiracy theories go, Dr. Fauci's emails have leaked. We know that he's done gain-of-function research on coronaviruses. I think that there's information out there that you can get from all kinds of news sources. And to just label something a conspiracy theory because you're uncomfortable with doing your due diligence and your research is really unfortunate. So again, all the Board of Supervisors, I hope that you look into Project Veritas. They have multiple Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson scientists that are being interviewed undercover that are saying what detrimental effects some of these vaccines are having and that they aren't, they themselves wouldn't recommend other people get them, especially children. That wasn't really what I was gonna say, but thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. All right, and then we have five three zero zero. Press star six then mute. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Adam Lustig um from the Lost Coast Populist. Um, yeah, I want to first of all, address that misinformation that woman who called in said she was a doctor. Um, I mean, I pulled it up right away. Sweden's full vaccination rate is 67%, okay? So I don't know what she's talking about, but that's just false. So, you know, I looked at Dr. Hoffman's report and he's claiming that natural immunity may only last a few months, whereas immunity from the vaccine may last a lifetime. And there's literally no science anywhere to back that up. What there is, is plenty of science showing that natural immunity can last up to a lifetime. I mean, there's one particular study of over 100,000 people in in uh Israel showing that. I've sent you all these studies, uh mostly probably haven't read them, but they are in your inbox if you do ever choose to look. But you know, there's booster shots, they're on their fourth booster shot in Israel. Uh CDC Director here has already said that they're coming and that vaccination status is most likely going to change based on whether you get the booster or not. So you know, that that this is, why would you need booster shots if it somehow lasted a lifetime? So I mean, Dr. Hoffman's is lies. He just, he's either incompetent, corrupt, or both. But uh, you know, he's just a vaccine pusher, that's all he is. And this idea, we can vaccinate our way out of this, uh has anybody looked at Vermont, the most vaccinated state in the country? They're going through a surge right now. So same with Maine, which is like number four, but also New Hampshire in the middle, which has a middle-of-the-range vaccination rate. It doesn't really matter. You can look at Florida and Texas are both on the downside of their surge. Florida has the lowest case rate in the country now. So the idea that masks work, I mean, look at Orange County versus L.A., where they did a mass mandate in one and not the other. Orange County actually did better. So and the political ideology, it's obvious that some of your political ideologies, particularly three of the people on the board here, um they're fully influencing your perspective on all of this. So she's just projecting when she said that. I mean, President Trump's telling everybody to run out and get the vaccine and 72% of black males in New York between 18 and 44 aren't vaccinated. And you know, 80% of black Americans vote Democrat. So this idea that it's political in some way is a joke. Like, you know, I'm in these health freedom groups around town and most people are independents. They're not Trump supporters. So you know, this is all just a projection. I see a lot of unhealthy egos on the board, people attached to their political ideology and willing to enforce it on everyone else. 55% of children 12 to 15 in the county, according to your dashboard, have not been vaccinated. That's 55%. That's a majority of parents decided not to vaccinate their kids 12 to 15. So in, you know, I remember when you guys were making fun of the whole horse dewarmer thing and then it turned out all the major media outlets had to retract their stories. They flat out lied about what happened in Mississippi, a lie about the hospital in Oklahoma, you know, and now we see that ivermectin works. I took it, it worked amazing for me. I have many friends and family have taken it. It's a safe medicine, billions of doses worldwide over 50 years with a safety record better than Tylenol. I don't know, you can call yourself a doctor when you would suppress potentially life-saving safe medication from somebody. So, yeah, I don't know what's going on around here. I mean, thankfully, we have a primary coming up in June and two of your seats are available. So hopefully, we can get some people in here that'll, you know, represent all of the county and not just push their political ideology on the rest of us.
All right, thank you, Adam. All right, thanks. Our next one is seven.
Chair Bass?
Yes, sir?
Just before any, just a point of order, before they address Dr. Connor's, is that woman one more time? She's a board-certified physician and has practiced, I think, in Humboldt County and Eureka for over 30 years. So she has earned that title, not the title that woman. She has cared for thousands of local people and I'm just, I mean, just say what you want, but I I she earned that title and she's been saving lives here for 30 years. So I don't think that woman qual, she qualifies as that woman.
All right, thank you Supervisor Bone. Usually wouldn't take it out of turn, but good points there. And speaking of, um I do see seven zero three three, we think may have already spoken. So I'm gonna check and if you've already spoken, you don't get additional time, but seven zero three three, if if uh as you press star six to unmute and if you haven't talked, um you can talk for three minutes and if you have, um we just have to say thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Rex Bone of what he just said about me. Yes, um I appreciate it and I won't speak anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. All right, so zero one five one. And I'm not going, I'm I'm gonna say something right now. I'm not going back to one one seven two that has their hand up again because they have already spoken and they really don't want to back and forth. So um you can uh probably just take your hand down. All right, zero one five one, press star six to unmute.
Hi, uh this is Dottie Russell, Southern Humboldt, and I'm not sure exactly what's going on with the um some things that are on the consent calendar, one of which is about having caseworkers um for mental health. And so it seems like there's a few different things, I'm not totally familiar with them, but we are desperately in need in Southern Humboldt of caseworkers. So there's lots of ideas about how to house people that have been houseless for a long time. Almost everything that I've heard so far in all the Zoominars, the Zooms, um all the webinars from the state have said that you need a caseworker to work along with the housing that they're putting um these folks into, which is a great idea. But I can attest for you that if you put people into a lot of housing that haven't been used to being housed and you don't have a caseworker to give some supports to getting to appointments, whatever else they might need, uh it's not gonna work. So you really have to have these caseworkers, whatever you have to do to get caseworkers to work along with everybody to make sure that they're successful. There's grant money, there's funding, there's all kinds of things um that should be available and should be connected to collaborate with housing folks. So that's number one. And I'm sure that that um I'll be back on the um on the whole issue. With the with the public comment, I also wanted to say, as far as vaccines, um as far as medications, I think one thing that we're losing sight of a little bit is individuals and how individuals respond to things. So um recently, my husband was put on all kinds of medicine because of hearts and surgeries and all kinds of things. And then when we went to the cardiologist after having over a year of a ghastly um situation, he said, you're having a reaction to one of these medicines, you're taking three, get off all of them right now immediately. And there's alerts online every place saying, don't get off of them right away. But they, but this cardiologist said, we can't take a chance anymore, you've got to get off the stuff right now. So we did within 48 hours. He could think clearly again after not being able to think very well for two years. So I just want to say, that's a weird thing. It's weird that it happened to him, whatever, but it does happen to some people. So so people will have a different reaction to the things that they're asked to take. And I think we need to be sensitive to if somebody maybe has had allergic reactions to medicine in the past to, you know, excuse them from the having vaccines and still be able to work at their jobs for whatever it is. I just think that we need to be proactive in addressing everybody as an individual. Children not being able to go to school because they haven't been vac vaccinated or their parents or whatever is going on with that. These kids need interaction, they need to have their education. And some people have contacted me as a as a as a credentialed teacher myself, working in three of the elementary schools in Southern Humboldt in the past, have said, well, can we just start a school, just an independent school, so that our kids can be in school, interacting with each other, and they haven't been vaccinated? So just to kind of give you some thoughts, let's figure out how to teach, reach each person in our community honestly and with creativity. Yeah, thanks.
All right, thanks. All right. So and I have confirmed the staff that one one seven two already did speak, so we will go back to the to the board, kind of. We're gonna go to DA Fleming and Hildy for thanking Hildy for her years of service.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that you took a break so that we could actually be more present. I'm here with Hildy Jacobson and really so much appreciate the board's recognition of her many years of service to victims and witnesses in Humboldt County and other counties as well. And Hildy did want to address the board.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the program that I worked for for 23 years. The California Victim Compensation Board, founded in 1911, is a state agency that oversees the provision of compensation to victims of violent crimes and the collection of restitution from criminal offenders. The program, part of Humboldt County's DA's office, assists in bill payment for expenses that are the result of the crime and are not covered by insurance or other sources. Some of the expenses covered are medical or dental expense, mental health therapy, income loss, funeral burial, home security improvement, moving or relocation, and home or vehicle modification. The program does not cover property loss. The program can be challenging, staying current with California statutes, precedent decisions, and policy and procedure changes. The program can be challenging, but it can also be rewarding, knowing you were able to make a difference to a crime victim. I thoroughly enjoyed working for Maggie. We're very lucky to have her as our district attorney. Thank you to Maggie and to the board for this honor. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Hildy, thank you for your years of service to the county. I saw the sheriff off, the sheriff has his hand up as well. Oh, uh DA Fleming, and then I'll go to the sheriff. Oops, okay, I'll go to sheriff.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I just wanted to just recognize Hildy and her 20-plus years of service. We, Hildy's a classic example of of maintaining a program that goes behind the scenes that really does make a difference in our community. We have, you know, lots of these programs, but the DA Victim Witness Program is something that is so essential to getting people back on their feet, to supporting crime victims in our in our community. And Hildy has been one of those stable forces in the DA Victim Witness uh for many years. I've worked alongside of her, I've seen her personally go above and beyond to try and help uh people on a daily basis, and she's a true public servant. I really appreciate all those things that you've done, Hildy, that make a difference, and I just wish you well in retirement.
Sheriff. All right, um DA Fleming, did you want to add anything more?
Yes, thank you so much. And I really can't say enough about how much we appreciate Hildy's service. And as mentioned, you know, helping victims and witnesses and sometimes even when cases aren't able to proceed, they are there to help them, to support them, uh and to make sure that they get all the services they need to try to put their life back on track. So Hildy has been an exceptional, exceptional worker all these many years and we all just so much appreciate her dedication and her her heart. So thank you again for this.
All right, well, thank you. And uh thank you for sticking with us during the public comment to get to this point. Great, any other comments by supervisors on either Hildy's retirement or on the rest of the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson and then Bone, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I I wanna commend Hildy for the service and I just want to say again, it's just that the team, these above and beyond team members in really sewing together the edges of the frayed parts of our fabric of society, right? I mean, it's like we have this fabric, this community, and parts of it have some, you know, there are some parts that need mending and these are our mentors, these are our folks that really put in the care to help help that, pull it all up for that together. And I just, I know um, no, I know relative of the Hindus, who's a wonderful person, I assume, that the that that that's been part of that too. And I want to say thank you for for helping raise a wonderful person. And then also, um I I do want to address just for a second, the the comment related to vaccinating animals and and its association with human health, but we do that right now with rabies vaccinations. We vaccinate animals to protect human beings from the scourge of rabies, which can can and does kill people in the United States. And so not saying that it's necessary for this particular pandemic, but it's something, it is a tool we do use, it's common. But going back around, thank you so much for your service, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And Supervisor Wilson, I think, uh Supervisor Bone, I think I heard you, and then Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up.
I've got a couple other things to hit as we do this, so I'm gonna wrap them all up at once. So go ahead and go to Supervisor Bushnell.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Hildy for her service and that the Victim Witness Program is so essential and amazing. And I I know you must know, but the people's lives that you've touched over 23 years, it's made a difference to them and it's such an important um service. My family utilized Victim Witness Program and it made the difference in my life and my children's life, and I really want to thank you.
All right, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, same thing. Hildy, thank you. I know you're gonna miss all those people upstairs a little bit. I hope you and I hope you enjoy your retirement, you've certainly earned it. And I really get, I really hope you get to enjoy people coming up to you in the grocery store and everything else and thanking you for helping them in years past. I think that's the most rewarding part of any job we do. So again, congratulations and I hear Maggie's trying to hire three people to take your place, so that'll give you some idea. So congratulations. And now moving on, we had a couple other retirements. And we and we haven't done these before and I'm and I'm proud to do them. We've got a retirement for um Highway Patrol Officer Chris Nelson, who's uh, I knew his father, knew Chris, but his father Bruce. So Bruce was So Bruce was a CHP officer for years. And I also want to recognize Sergeant Mike Campbell, who I met through the North Deal Program with Caltrans. But we've got a couple guys that came out of the, the academy, and they, they found their way to Humboldt and the North Coast very quickly, and they stayed like so many people do, and serviced us in so many ways. And I was talking to the sheriff about this, and I, I really want to thank Captain Sean Morris for bringing this forward because it's so important that we work, we work, these guys, CHP, they travel the streets of Cotten, they travel, we've had contracts with them to take care of our unincorporated area on traffic. We've got a great working relationship with those guys, and, and it's so important that we do this up here when we have forty-four hundred square miles to cover in Humboldt County that we have them to meet on. So I wanted to just recognize, I'm not gonna read them, but I wanted to recognize CHP Sergeant Mike Campbell and Officer Chris Nelson for uh, their great careers, their retirement moving forward. And I believe that um, our sheriff, Billy Hansel, had something to say on this.
I see his hand up there. Sheriff Hansel.
And I just want to echo Supervisor Bone's statements there. You know, having two CHP officers that essentially spent their whole career in Humboldt County with their families, invested in making our county better is uh, is, is one thing to definitely recognize. So uh, definitely want to um, to echo those statements. You know, these guys could, really could have gone anywhere in the state. They could have promoted, they could, but they really, really wanted to make Humboldt County better. So Mike Campbell, Chris Nelson, thank you guys for your service. Um, and uh, on behalf of all of the sheriff's deputies out there that have worked hand in hand, shoulder to shoulder with these guys, thank you for your service. Really appreciate it.
Sheriff, did you tell them we're hiring if they want to?
An application's already been in the mail, for sure.
Right, and DA Fleming?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you so much. I was really pleased to see these two were also on this morning. It's so important to recognize their years of service, and I too can't say enough about these two officers and their dedication to our community. I've known Sergeant Mike Campbell, uh, even before he was a CHP officer. He was a health sport trainer when we first joined there twenty-five years ago. So it was great to see him become a highway patrol officer. And these two individuals have really been exemplary officers, and I so appreciate their service. And again, thank you for the board for, for recognizing their service. This is just tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, anybody else have a comment? Alright, now I believe we're ready for a roll call vote. Please, Nikki. Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Perfect. Vote passes five-zero. Thank you.
And Chair Bass?
Yes, sir.
Just like nose in one more time. I want to thank everybody for D nine, the uh, Mental Health Wellness Grant that we're supporting for Dr. Buck's bomb for um, troubled youth. I mean, this is, this is such a great step in maybe stopping some of the transition into what we have faces adults. And Dr. Buck's bomb has got a great program going forward, and I think it's gonna be a game changer. So I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you. And I, I know we have a lot of staff on for um, one of the items coming up, but we do have a time set at nine-thirty, which obviously we're a little bit behind. So we're going to go to that time set item first, and then we will go back to the regular agenda. And so um, this um, item is a public hearing on unmet transit needs. So at this time, I open the public hearing, and I believe Charlotte Merkel is here for Director Mattson to do the staff report.
Good morning, board, members of the chair, um, members of the board, chair. We have today the unmet transit needs for the unincorporated part of Humboldt County. This is to bring in um, requests for unmet transit needs. Um, this is a public hearing so that we can discuss with members of the community on um, where we can improve our transit system. This will go to HCOG. There are several meetings throughout the county um, for unmet transit needs. It'll go through HCOG for their process to see whether the transit needs are deemed, that they can be met and whether they can be funded. So um, at this point in time, any comment from the public will be recorded, and we will forward that information on to HCOG.
Alright, and we do have a few hands up. Our first one is um, last four digits of one-nine-five-four. Press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. And if you happen to be with us today and you are watching on video and you're calling in, turn the volume on your video off because there is a time delay which will confuse the situation. We're act, there you go. Welcome.
Hi, um, my name's Catherine Wallman, and I'm not quite sure where you are on the agenda. I've got a little confused. But I would like to voice my very, very strong opposition to agenda number fourteen, where they're discussing about, about contact tracing going on in Humboldt.
Ma'am, we've already, we've already passed that one, but thank you very much. Alright, we will move on to the next person, and that would be zero-one-five-one. Press star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, Dottie again. Um, so from Southern Humboldt, I'm a little bit confused because it seemed like we were talking about the consent calendar, and then um, we scooted on to this, and I'm not sure what
Dottie? I, I stopped your time for a moment. What I'm trying to say is, we finished with the consent calendar, and we voted on that. But we have a time set for nine-thirty, so we will come back to general public comment if that is what you're, what you were looking for.
Okay, and um, so right now we're talking about the unmet needs, right?
Unmet transit needs, yes.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I want to say, um, many years ago, we were very involved in getting um, the transportation back on track in Southern Humboldt. I'm very glad that we did that, uh, as a community, not us, but as a community. It works great. It's fantastic. Definitely part of the success of people being housed and people being more successful. Uh, very, very important. I think it needs to be stepped up in Southern Humboldt. And as far as daily getting to Garberville, getting to the small communities. So getting to Redway, getting to doctors, getting to banks, getting to grocery stores, whatever. So I think it's very, very important that we step it up more, um, more frequently during the day so that if somebody has to go to the doctor and they're sick, they don't keep their appointment and then have to sit around for three hours, or make an appointment at a bank and talk to somebody for five minutes and run out to catch the best, going back in the other direction. So that's not really working out very well. Also in terms of the frequency going up to um, meet appointments and go to College of the Redwoods as well. So I'd love to have a meeting where posters are put around in public places, not just in the newspaper, and make sure that people that have needs are really talking about it. Because I know an awfully lot of people that have needs that don't really get on Zoom or have transportation to meetings, so they're, you're not really getting their input, which I am uh, talking to the redistricting people about that and the state as far as the rapid rehousing, about how to access people's voice that don't usually have a voice. So I think it's very important that we uh, improve things so that we can all be a part of our community, making it better. Thanks.
Thank you, Dottie. And we have one more hand up for unmet transit needs, and that would be one-zero-four-one. As you press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Donnie. Um, I'm actually calling because I'm quite confused with the vote that you guys just did to pass the entire consent calendar. It isn't every individual item?
Yes, um, yes, it is. Thank you very much. This is uh, if you want to talk about, and there's nothing, I'm not gonna have any conversation on that last vote. So um, if you wish to talk on unmet transit needs, this is your time in um, in unincorporated areas. Okay. Alright, I do not see any other hands up. So we'll return to the board. Uh, board members have any unmet transit needs they wanted to pass along? Supervisor Madron?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I agree, you know, Southern Humboldt, Northern Humboldt uh, do have unmet needs, and it seems to come up every year. One of the things that I think would be very helpful for our community is when these unmet needs do come up and are suggested or mentioned, it'd be really nice to close the loop. You know, there doesn't seem to be a process set up whereby HCOG can report back to the board on what they look at in regards to these unmet needs that come up from the public. And I understand that sometimes the needs can't be met, and so then nothing changes or happens. But I really think it'd be very valuable for the public if we could uh, have a, a, a loop back with HCOG where they come back after the unmet needs hearings and provide us with a report on whether or not those needs can be met, and if not, why not, and that kind of thing. So I just think it'd be nice to close the loop on that. And it would help us all understand the unmet needs process a lot better. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Supervisor Madron. And I'm going to go and do something I don't normally do because we are getting this information for HCOG. Um, two hands did come up after I closed the public, well, I went back to the board. I will go to those two hands. If you are listening and you are wanting to make a comment on unmet needs, press star nine to raise your hand now, because if it's not up by the time those two speakers are done, we will go back to the board and stay with the board. Alright, if you are zero-three-two-six, um, it's your turn, and you can press star six to unmute. Now, zero-three-two-six.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. You're talking about transit needs in Humboldt County. I've worked thirty years. I built, uh, to supervise the design about twenty miles of state and uh, local highways. And I did the twenty miles of bikeways, and I did all the other nonsense stuff that, you know, civil engineering engineers do. Okay. I came up here to Humboldt County, and LA County is much more pedestrian-friendly than Humboldt County. Humboldt County has essentially, when the bicyclist, the district engineer for Caltrans came in, essentially it, uh, it made it illegal to walk between any community in Humboldt County. You see these signs saying pedestrians prohibited on, on all the on-ramps and off-ramps. I've, after twenty-seven years, I finally got them to put a crossing over the Mad River. Okay, twenty-seven years. I can't live that long. I got them to do it on the Little River. Well, we still haven't gotten rid of that. Got a crossing over the Little River, but the thing is, there's a possibility of doing it, but they never listened to me anyway, so uh, I, I do that. I got it on the uh, Redwood Creek in nineteen-eighty-three even. And that was before the bicyclist. And the thing is, you, you have, the Little River, you have a, a crossing that's provided already in the, on the bridge, and then you have the sign saying pedestrians prohibited. So one of the basic ways of trans, of transportation is walking. And if you can't walk between communities, you have to, like the one sheriff I talked to about it, you know, when they were, they were talking about how you cite it, cite the person when they're on the highway, when there's a pedestrians prohibited sign. He says, why can't you get a car? Well, I don't want a car. I worked, I walked for thirty-four years. I walked seven, eight miles a day. I only took my car five times in thirty-four years. That's because I changed locations and everything. But the thing is, why can't you consider pedestrians as being a form of transportation? Anyway, thank you. Bye.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wilson. We have a zero-one-one-six. Press star six to unmute to speak on transit needs, unmet transit needs.
Yeah, I was just, um, wanted to comment on like, people who ride public transit and have like health conditions where they can't wear masks or facial coverings, and that their, their needs are not being met. I mean, it's, it's a violation of, of their constitutional state rights and federal rights. And it also violates um, ADA, like American Disabilities, on people with asthma and stuff. Some people just cannot do that. So these, these policies really need to be rethought and be able to accommodate everyone in the community. It's, it's just not, not legal. It's not fair. It's not just, okay? So I'd really like you to consider that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And then we have, oops, one-zero-four-one. I believe you just popped off my screen, but one-zero-four-one. You are there. Press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I would like to echo the last caller's concerns and, as well as like the masking in the public transit. It's also kind of uncalled for because right now there's less, there's ten cases per a hundred thousand in a seven-day period. That equates to about sixteen total cases in all of Humboldt, because our population's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-three people, some odd. So there's really no justification for even any ongoing mask mandates at all, let alone in, in transportation. And I'd also like to um, to mirror the previous caller too that likes to walk. I also like to walk and ride my bicycle, and I found it very, very difficult to, to do so in the area without, you know, um, wide lanes for bike lanes, areas for pedestrians to walk long distances and get to and fro. It's, it's really, really difficult, you know, and, and just all of it together is something that you guys need to really consider changing the, the mask mandates, as well as the mask mandates in public transit, and improving the way that pedestrians as well as bicyclists can, you know, journey on the roads alongside their friends in cars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and one-nine-five-four is our final speaker. One-nine-five-four. Press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, I'm calling. I, I really appreciated the comments of the last two callers about the mask mandates on public transportation. It is true that some people have very difficult time breathing with masks on. And I know I work inside and I have uh, physical activity wearing a mask, and it is extremely difficult for me to breathe well when I'm, when I'm being very active, working inside. And I feel sick the next day, for a couple days, before I have to go back to work inside. So I would like to express my concern about these mask mandates based on the statistics that the other caller also gave. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're going back to the board, and I just want to remind people who may be listening and some who commented that um, this item is not really, you know, we do not have the power. I mean, certainly those comments can be sent over to HCOG, but Charlotte can say, um, what's, Charlotte, can you give a, a little background of what all this is about and how it really works? And perhaps Supervisor Bushnell, I don't know if she's connected with you yet or ran into unmet transit needs, but it's always been one of those kind of strange things the first time I heard it. So um, I think people have a little bit different idea that might have been listening today.
Sure. What we do is every year, we request public's comment on unmet transit needs. This is transportation um, in areas where we have no transportation or areas that might need more transportation. Some examples are, we did the Old Arcata Road, but you have to meet Fairbox funding that comes in, and it's set as a fifteen percent. So when things like that happen, and we try different ways to make transportation work. We did a test example for Old Arcata Road where we did on-demand services, means they called in for service or taxi service versus putting a full bus out there, which costs, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to run a year, and we might have had four people ride the bus. It looks at stuff like that. We've added additional bike racks to buses, so four people biking. What we do is, we look, it goes through all of the cities, the county, and HCOG, we all have a meeting for unmet have a meeting for unmet transit needs. The system goes back to HCOG, they look at all of the requirements needed throughout the county and then they, they determine whether it's met, can be met or not based on their requirements. There is a spreadsheet that comes out after they do this. We are looking at what can be met or not met for next year. So they'll look at it, they'll run through all those scenarios for, we have Arcata, Burndale, Blue Lake County, Fortuna, Eureka, HCOG and HTA that all will have these meetings, they'll discuss what's going on and they'll come back and do a spreadsheet and rate every one of the requests that come in and then they'll determine what is to be met, can be met or not. We do not do the determination, HCOG does.
All right. Thank you. And then, any other supervisors have any questions? Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you Chair Bass. I just wanted to comment that a lot of what we perceive as transit is changing quickly and I think Charlotte referenced that. There's, there's just a lot of space technologically speaking and user speaking between a bus and say the concept of Uber and on-demand and there's just a lot of changes that we're seeing, not necessarily in this community yet because we're just not quite there, but there are a lot of changes in other communities that where the melding of these, of these technologies, both public and private are starting to really happen and occur and I think that that's expanding what that means and what that is. And I do think that there is a nexus between active transportation and the unmet needs only because if you have good active transportation connectivity, maybe you don't need the, the other, the other, the other transit need. The other thing is, I just want to, Mr. Wilson who called in, who's also, also an engineer, I'm an engineer as well, there is a book he might be really interested in, it's called Confessions of a Recovering Engineer because so much of what he just talked about is in that, and that just came out here last month. So Mr. Wilson, I recommend the book Confessions of a Recovering Engineer for you because it seems like you kind of are one and I am too, so there you go. We have that in common.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just, through the chair, I just wanted to re respond, I guess, to a public comment about the needs in Southern Humboldt and one of the large needs that I hear from constituents are service between Garberville and Redway. And I had spoke with someone earlier about, they used to run a Quell bus down there that would be between the Garberville-Redway area. So I just do want to comment on that for the Southern Humboldt area.
Thank you. So unless there's any other comments, what we're looking for is a motion to forward an action summary of today's comments to the Humboldt County Association of Governments.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Nikki, we have a roll call vote.
Sure thing. Supervisor Bone?
Please, thank you. Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yeah.
Great. Pass is five zero. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, and now we've closed that public hearing. Thank you Charlotte for being here. And we'll go back to the public comment on non-agenda items. And this is the opportunity for community members to comment on items that are not on our agenda. You'll have the standard three minutes. I will go and see who signed up for that. And if you're interested in just general public comment on items not on the agenda, make sure to press star nine now. Right. So zero, one zero four one, you have your hand up first and so press star six to unmute.
Yes, I would like to speak on the ridiculousness that we're still having these meetings in Zoom when there's 10 cases per 100,000 people in a seven day period.
Actually, sir, we have that, actually, a little farther in the meeting, we'll be discussing that. There's an actual item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries.
We will start, we'll go to the next person, zero one one six. Press star six to unmute. Items not on the consent calendar, I mean, not on the agenda.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is not on the agenda. Thank you.
Off the coast of California. Well, a record number of supply ships waiting to unload off the coast of California. News outlets claim COVID-based worker shortages as the primary cause. Other critical thinkers suggest that the real problem lies with the limited amount of truckers committed to comply with the state's new regulations. This is true, empty shelves in many grocery food companies, a failure in central planning. This coupled with recent surges in inflation and soaring fuel prices point to food becoming more expensive, import and more scarce. With these international, national and state problems being public knowledge, it is disturbing to hear that Neeland Farms, just through your feet, by the North Coast. For supervisors, a group that might become, may come a time when your next meal depends on locally sourced food, please help the Neeland Farms again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is, I mean, I think, zero one one six, actually you're, it looks like you're still talking, but we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I thought you would just unmute me naturally, but thank you, I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you. And seven one zero eight, we're going to go to you next, seven one zero eight, press star six to unmute.
Hi, good morning. I just want to say that the redistricting maps that are available on the web, people are having a really hard time and I don't know if, and if you have went to the site and tried to see where the lines are and stuff. These maps also should be published where people that don't have the internet connection to see them and it would be nice to have what's current and then where they're making the changes. So just wanted to hope that you'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, honey. All right. Next we will go to zero one five one, press star six to unmute. Zero one five one, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. Again, I just want to tell you, I did have to hit star six two times in order to be unmuted just for the record. So I wanted to address a few things that happened several, several weeks ago and I think that we really need to have a protocol set for what happens with case, cases brought forward to the planning department and especially code enforcement. I've been hearing more and more stories about things that have been pretty difficult for people and instead of having an ombudsman of how to get through it and how to be successful, we have a lot of stories of, that are pretty shocking. So, so that's one thing that I wanted to say about the code enforcement issue, that we need a protocol. I'd be happy to be on a board of some kind to help develop that if not with the, with the grand jury because I, I think that there's some gaps there that are pretty traumatic for people. So wanted to bring that up and I also wanted to bring up, I felt like somebody working for the planning department code enforcement was a little bit reprimanded by Rex Bone for being too nice. I don't think that's the case. I think that she was being reasonable, compassionate and responsible. So I was a little bit offended by that, but more offended was the, the kind of thought about that maybe we were taking some money from the Christian Science Church or something. So just for the record, I wanted you to know publicly that the Christian Science Church has about $1,200 in their bank account. So know, when we opened the shelter for three months with absolutely no help from the county two years ago and kept it open for three months since there was no extreme weather one, that was all paid for with personal funds from myself and my friends and none of it came out of the Christian Science Church. So I, I think that, you know, there was like a, you know, a little hint of that maybe we were taking some money from the church. Absolutely not the case. Anybody in Southern Humboldt can verify that, including the bank. So Rex Bone, if you would like to have access to our bank account for the Christian Science Church at Unqua Bank, I'll be more than happy to give it to you and then hopefully you will apologize in a public comment or, or on an agenda item because that was really uncalled for. And, and then as far as the comment about that we might've been irresponsible for not paying for insurance. So the reason that we weren't paying for insurance was number one, there wasn't funds, we don't limit our membership to our church to just people that have money that can make contributions, but instead people that like to pray together and help one another and heal, those are the people that we embrace. So instead of our insurance, we opted to.
Thank you very much, Dottie. Thank you, Dottie. All right. So our next speaker is five three zero zero. If you're five three zero zero, press star six to unmute. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hey, this is Adam Lustig, Lost Coast Populist. Yeah, I'd like to address the, the concept of respect that, like what Supervisor Bone brought up. You know, I referred to her as that lady after she lied about the vaccination rates in Sweden and she insinuated that somehow our position is politically motivated. I mean, I voted for Bernie in the last two primaries. I was a lifelong Democrat up until recently when the Democrat Party decided to become authoritarians and my political beliefs no longer align with theirs, but this concept that it's somehow political, it's not. And, you know, I've sat here for the past few months and, you know, as being one of the 40% of the county that's not fully vaccinated, I've heard the discriminatory tone from many on the board. I mean, the insinuation that we shouldn't go to the hospital if we get sick or that we shouldn't look at hiring police officers that aren't vaccinated because those people, this, this concept that this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated, which there's no evidence for that unless, you know, you get your news from late night television or something. So, you know, respect goes both ways and, and, you know, this is still a free country and we still have First Amendment and free speech. So if I want to call her that lady, you know, I'll call her that lady and, you know, if you don't like it, I mean, I honestly don't care because at this point, the, the way that you have talked about us and treated us, the way you want to gaslight us and discriminate us and pretend that we're somehow dumb or, I don't even know, the, the, the attacks upon the people that have chosen not to get vaccinated from this board. You know, if you want respect, you need to give respect. You know, I said months ago, we need an advisory committee. We need to have people that believe alternative to what the mainstream is, you know, to what Dr. Fauci, the Beagle Torturer, has to say, you know, then you can hear both sides of the issue because as you can plainly see, this county is split on this issue and some of you are just completely ignoring those of us that don't agree with you. You don't want to hear a thing what we have to say, you don't want to look at any of our information, you're just going to repeat the false mainstream narrative from your political party and you want to just force your ideology upon all of us and, and, you know, you're going to coerce, threaten, you know, I mean, what are you eventually going to do? Are you, are you going to come and round us up and force inject us? Like where is this heading? So yeah, people are upset and they don't like the way you've been talking to us. So, you know, if you want respect, give respect and you'll get respect back. But, you know, at this point, you know, we're going to see a lot from you to change our tone. That's all.
All right. Thank you. And our next speaker is one one seven two, press, excuse me, one one seven two, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
I'd like to comment too on being corrected regarding addressing that doctor. It's just because I couldn't remember her name. It's not like insinuating that I am being disrespectful to someone else that's calling in. I want to make a comment regarding the vote that happened two weeks ago for city, you know, for county employees, that the people who are unvaccinated have to continue getting PCR tested while people who are not vac, who are vaccinated don't have to get the PCR test done weekly. The PCR test is incredibly invasive and I feel like it's discriminatory to only test the unvaccinated when people who are vaccinated can still contract COVID and spread it. So I just feel like that practice is, yeah, really discriminatory towards one portion of the population and your constituents. And then I also just want to mention that we are claiming that these injections are safe and effective, however, there's no long-term safety data on fertility and how this is going to potentially affect people's fertility. I'm seeing studies published on the increase in miscarriages in the last year and that seems very alarming to me that this could, you know, this has long-term safety effects that we just don't know what they are. And our county is moving in a direction of coercion and discrimination for people that are choosing not to inject themselves with something that we just, we just don't know what the long-term safety data is because it hasn't ever been used on humans before and the animal trials were not very promising, which is why it had never been used on humans before until this time in history where we just happened to skip animal trials so that it can be used on humans. It just seems very not thought all the way through and I would just like to raise my concerns on the future fertility of our county and myself being someone that's getting ready to start a family, something that's very alarming and concerning to me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we have three zero five three, whoops, hold on a second, sorry, I think I'm wrong here, seven four two nine, is that what's next, the person who's next, Nikki?
Yes.
Okay, seven four two nine. Thank you, Nikki. Press star six to unmute and it looks like you're unmuted.
Okay. Good, good morning. My name's Robi Tenorio and I was calling about the redistricting, but first I want to just give you my, my empathy and my admiration for being able to do your job as supervisors. This has been a really tough time and I, I think you guys have been put through the wringer. So I, I am calling about redistricting and I, I made several attempts to, to work on the computer site and look at the draft maps and make comments and I, I'm not, I admit I'm not very computer savvy, but I was really disappointed at how difficult it was to use that site and understand the maps and the questionnaire was, the, the questions were, were a little bit confusing, but I, I did my best, I filled them out. Sometimes when I clicked on certain prompts to get more information, there popped up a box that told me that it didn't exist or it was an error. And I, I went through the whole thing and answered as much as I could and then I pressed submit and it said I was unsubscribed. So I, I gave up after that and I'm going to, of course, try and attend the meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock and I'm just wondering if there is a way that the committee that is working on this could examine the way the maps are now and just do a little tiny adjustment with the populations. It just, it seems like there's very dramatic changes and I'm not sure if the folks who are, are on this committee are from out of the area and they don't understand. are on this committee are from out of the area, and they don't understand the cultural significance that people have become attached to. It just seems like it might be an easier way to go than that. And I'm hoping that you will be able to override their suggestions so far. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Robi. 3053, might be Thomas. Press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm you can hear me?
Yes, Thomas.
All right, so I will, I'm not going to take a lot of my time. I will share that the redistricting map that previous callers had said basically makes people so frustrated you can't even follow it. So you have to go off of maps that you see posted at other sites. The questionnaire kicks you out. Yes, all those things are not great. And those of us that believe in rural living are terrified. The reason, my original public comments, though, I was really saddened. I know that the auditor controller is not under your purview. It's an elected position. But there was many talks about late payments, delayed payments, all those kinds of things. But I was following my son's school board charter meeting, or the school, and they had a financial report done by a financial agency that was hired out. And there was a reason they were having cash flow problems and not able to make bills, because the county was late getting payments to them. At first, they thought it was the treasurer, but with my knowledge of knowing that the treasurer doesn't cut the checks, I believe it might be the auditor controller. So the same problems we heard 12 months ago, six months ago, that I thought was put to bed by now, because they haven't heard it in the papers, are still out there. So it's really unfortunate. I don't know what you can, as supervisors, do, but those small districts, probably fire districts and other special districts, are really, really struggling because they have a tight budget. And then another part of my public comments, we have this process that we went through cannabis. We went through a huge public process, passed the CMM L U O, or Ordinance 1.0. And then we went through a huge process and passed the CCL U O, or Ordinance 2.0. When Ordinance 2.0 was put through, there was some modifications that were taking effect to put in place to applicants under Ordinance 1.0, mainly around the community plan areas and a couple other things. We haven't had a public process to change the ordinance in regards to many, many things, including generator use. But there's many projects you see that come across that have conditions to not use generators in five years. But there hasn't been a public process to say that that is justified and not already in the baseline CEQA documentation. But it doesn't always happen on every project. There's been a project since I was appointed to the Planning Commission that was a mixed light too, over an 85 KW generator that was approved with no generator restrictions.
Thomas, just a notice, Thomas, you're, the little dinger that says you have 30 seconds left did not go off, so I just want to let you know you have 30 seconds left.
Okay, so it hasn't been consistent all the way through, and there has not been a public process to change that ordinance. So please be mindful of that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. All right, we'll go to 7488. Press star six to unmute. The general public comment on items not on the agenda. 7488, there you go. Welcome.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Nye. I have been emailing you guys for a while, and I just wanted to make a public comment today in regards to Hoffman's COVID report from last week. I find the data shared super interesting. As I continue to read data to the opposite effect on several points, I will share with you the details of one study in particular today, which is incredibly relevant. I've emailed, I'm going to go ahead and email each of you individually a link to the study to which I'm referring.
Well, just a moment, Susan, I think, I stopped your timer. Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
I believe that was on consent.
Well, I think she was talking about the one two weeks ago.
Oh, two weeks ago. Okay. Because the report was published, that she said last week, that report was published on Friday, so I assumed it was last week. But, all right.
Well, I will clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it is the one from two weeks ago.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll start your timer again. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I will share the details of this one study, and I will email each of you individually a link to the study. The study was published in the European Journal of Epidemiology on September 30th of this last year, last month, of this year, which was just last month. The title of the study reads, "Increases in COVID-19 are unrelated to levels of vaccination across 68 countries and 2,947 counties in the United States." The title gives you the gist of the study's findings, which read directly from the study, "At the country level, there appears to be no discernible relationship between percentage of population fully vaccinated and new COVID-19 cases. In fact, the trend line suggests a marginally positive association such that countries with higher percentage of population fully vaccinated have higher COVID-19 cases per 1 million people. Notably, Israel, with over 60% of the population fully vaccinated, had the highest COVID-19 cases per million people in the last seven days. The lack of a meaningful association between percentage population fully vaccinated and new COVID-19 cases is further exemplified, for instance, by comparison of Iceland and Portugal. Both countries have over 75% of their population fully vaccinated and have more than, and have more COVID-19 cases per 1 million people than countries such as Vietnam and South Africa that have around 10% of their population vaccinated." Please read the study for yourself. Please do your due diligence in this area. I have been reading study after study to the same effect. The funding behind a study tends to sway the results. Unfortunately, science is as perfect as the humans conducting it. I have also read a plethora of studies to suggest that naturally acquired antibodies last a lifetime. Natural immunity lasts a lifetime, and that immunity from mRNA injections, AKA vaccines, wanes quickly. Side note, how does anyone know any of this anyway? There's absolutely no long-term data on any mRNA injection. Of course, to new technology. You can find a plethora of science to support whatever you want, basically, is my point. The fact is that this illness continues to have a survival rate of well over 99% and a bounty of safe and effective treatment, both natural and pharmaceutical. Experimental mRNA injections are not the only or best, certainly not the safest, way to treat COVID-19. My claim a few weeks ago about y'all being paid to push a vaccine agenda is not baseless. The county is receiving money to vaccinate people. That's public information. Doctors do receive money to vaccinate people. And-
All right, thank you very much for calling in. And that was a three-minute timer. And our final speaker under items not on the agenda is 0326. 0326, press star six to unmute, and you'll have your three minutes.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I wanted to comment on the vaccination fiasco there. Forty, I'm older than most of you, all of you. Fifty-five years ago, my son, I took him to the doctor. He gave him a mump shot. Okay, I didn't ask for it. He didn't ask me for permission or anything like that. And he said, "This shot will give you lifetime immunity." And I didn't want that, because I figured, well, you get, when you're a kid, you get over these things. When you're older on, you have serious side effects if you get the mumps. And I didn't believe him. That was in the days before they had all this nonsense about COVID and all this wonderful stuff that it does. But anyway, so when Hoffman says that this vaccine, or, you know, that you get lifetime immunity, and he, how many years has he, I mean, Stevens says we've been studying this thing for 20 years, but the vaccine's only been out a year. So how do we say there's been lifetime immunity? Anyway, that was my comment on that. Another thing is the fear and hate that the culture, that the media, the North Coast Journal, Time Standard, and all these, the media, they culture it. I know my wife, one guy shouted her, "I hope you die before you infect me." Another threw a rock at us. Another one said, just like in the North Coast Journal, says, you have to, they want you to have a separate hospital that you pay for because they hate you. Another one, when we went over to the nurses' place there, they had something that said, "You should have your thing saying, 'Do not resuscitate,' which kill you off, you scumbag." Another woman, she's got sprayed. Somebody didn't like her, and she sprayed her with Lysol or Disinfectant or something like that. And the thing is, it's getting out of hand, where fear and hate are going to real, rule the world, and the next thing is the guillotine. Thank you. Bye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. We will go back to the board now, move on to our next item, which is a special presentation that comes to us from the County Administrative Office, and it's regarding the-
Chair Bass?
Yes, sir.
Hold on. There was a, there was a comment that, or, this is a non-agenda item. We had Vince Price come into the office this morning, and so I just wanted to make sure that his, he was having technological difficulties, and so I wanted to get his comment, and if that's all right.
Are you, is that Vernon?
Vernon, sorry.
If Vince-
It is Halloween, right? Vince Price on the mind there. No, Vernon, Vernon stopped in. So Vernon is, he has started a new nonprofit, Homeless Voices of Humboldt. And he came in to let us know, and he was having technological difficulties, couldn't call in, but he said, "On November 9th, it will be, it will become in front of the Inc. people to become under their umbrella as a nonprofit. It is a homeless voices, independent stakeholder organization, run and operated as a nonprofit organization that uses and shares lived experience of mental health challenges and homelessness to make a difference in Humboldt County. And you can get ahold of him at vernprice@gmail.com. That's Vern Price with two N's, and his number is 707-740-8915." And that is the report from Vernon. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Okay, so now we're going to go, I see Jeremy Clark there. He's all ready to go, but I will turn this over to Alicia Hayes. It's, as I said, a special presentation on a great workplace culture change initiative and the desired workplace culture statement.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I am very excited for this presentation to your board today on the Great Workplace Culture Initiative that has been underway for a number of months now. This initiative was the initial brainchild, so to speak, of the previous CAO, Amy Nelson. She really wanted to have people, as she would describe it, beating down the doors to come work for the county of Humboldt. And in order to get us to that place, we needed to improve our culture and our employee morale and engagement. And so this is one of those efforts that puts that into motion. It's the vision of the county to be a high-performing organization. And in doing so, each and every employee within the organization plays a role in creating the culture and making this an environment where we all want to be. This is a county-wide initiative, and it's a county-owned process. So again, each and every one of our staff has a role in implementing this initiative and making this an environment that adheres to the vision statement that staff will present today. What we have done to come up with this statement is, starting with Phase One, was defining our workplace culture. This utilized 60 employees across the organization to create a refined culture statement. There were three different cohorts who met three different times in the month of April and May. Also, there was a working group made of eight employees who took feedback from larger cohort groups and refined that statement down into what will be presented to you today. That working group was primarily led by Bennett Hoffman and other steering committee members who rotated through the process. Now, that group met weekly throughout the month of July. We are now in Phase Two, where we're assessing the current state. This involved 50 employees who came together and had very frank conversations about, about the work environment. Sorry, I'm having some technological difficulties. Can you all still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I thought my computer was dying for a moment there. So Phase Two was a group of employees who came together and had very frank conversations about their experiences within the organization and in their work environment. They also conducted interviews of their coworkers and other leaders throughout the organization. And then they came together and synthesized that information to find sort of where the pinch points were. Now we're working into Phase Three, where we'll actually put into motion a plan of attack, so to speak, to implement the workplace culture and to improve the environment of the county as a major employer in the community. I want to thank the working group. Again, that was comprised of nearly 60 staff members from multiple departments who served a variety of different roles within the organization. Also, the steering committee members, which was comprised of Cody Rogatz, the Aviation Director, Mari Wilson, the Assessor, Connie Beck, the Health and Human Services Director, Jeremy Clark, Project Manager and Human Resources, Linda Lee, the Human Resources Director, John Bartholomew, the Treasurer-Tax Collector, and John Ford, the Planning and Building Director. They've shown an immense amount of dedication to this project and have really stepped up as leaders to receive some critical feedback and shepherd this process through. So with that, I just want to stress the importance of this initiative. As a new leader in the organization, I'm very passionate and enthusiastic about following in Amy's footsteps and continuing to make this a great place to work. You know, your board has taken, has been having some conversations recently about multiple avenues where we can help to improve morale and improve the culture. And this is one prong to that overall initiative. And I have, I have a great outlook, and I think it's going to be very positive. And I look forward to playing even a minor role in that process as we move forward. With that, I will pass it off to Jeremy Clark and Bennett Hoffman, who will give you an introduction and further describe the process.
Thank you, CAO Hayes. Good morning, Chair Bass, honorable board members. Always a pleasure to appear before this body. As CAO Hayes said, I'm just basically going to kind of provide a little bit of an introduction as to the process, or, excuse me, an introduction as to the initiative, and then I'll pass it over to Director Hoffman, so he can elaborate a little bit on the process. So workplace culture is an important aspect of organizational life, and is concerned not with what we do, but with how we do it. As a public agency, our stakeholders are myriad, and each of us does our level best to serve the residents of Humboldt County and each other. In our journey to become a high-performing organization, the team worked collaboratively to assess our current workplace culture and develop an aspirational workplace culture statement which reflects what we believe is possible. The process was robust and the design comprehensive. We did not want this to be a top-down initiative, but rather an organic, collective process. Feedback from staff was incorporated at several points along the way. And as we continue to build the type of culture that inspires people to beat down the doors to work here, I can unequivocally state that I am excited about our potential and proud to be associated with this important initiative. So that said, I'll turn it over to Director Hoffman, so he can elaborate a little bit on the process employed as we carried out this important initiative. Thank you.
Welcome, Bennett.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. Thank you, Dr. Clark. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this important initiative this morning. I'm Bennett Hoffman. I'm the Director of the Child Support Services. When I joined the county workforce as a new department head about a year ago, I was excited to hear about this culture change initiative. It was already underway, and I was eager to get involved. Since that time, I was fortunate to work with this work group that I'm going to talk a little bit about, and then you're going to hear directly from them. They were tasked with finalizing this culture statement. This culture statement has been through many iterations. It started, it was developed as a draft by the original steering- It started, it was developed as a draft by the original steering committee members. It was presented to the group of 60 staff members in the first cohort. They provided us pages and pages of feedback, constructive criticism and positive feedback. And then this work group that I've been working with, they were tasked with taking all of that feedback, taking the draft statement and creating something that we present to you today as the final statement, the aspirational statement that this group has of how we want this culture change to happen and the culture that we want to be a part of as a county workforce. What I witnessed from this work group is truly a testament to the quality of the county workforce. I've been so impressed with all the staff that have been involved in this effort, their commitment to the effort, their willingness to be honest, to have frank conversations. And then finally, this was truly a collaborative effort. And the reason I believe this work group was successful in coming up with this final document is because they lived the principles outlined in this document while they were doing the work. And I've been very proud to be part of this and without further comment, I'm going to turn it over to the work group members themselves to talk a little bit more about their experiences.
I guess I'll go first.
Thanks, second half.
My name is Howard Leahy. I'm deputy assessor in the assessor's office. I've been with the county for about 14 years and it's been a pleasure to be on this, this group and creating this culture statement. And it was pretty enlightening as well, being able to share experiences and ideas with each other and being able to collaborate into creating our culture statement. There was a lot of things that I thought I knew, which I realized I didn't know. And hearing from coworkers and other departments, it was, it kind of helped kind of form this statement. And I think that we all work hard as county employees and, but like any organization, there's always room for improvement. And I think that this is not only internally, but this will get out externally as well. And like was stated, that will, it will hopefully create a environment where people want to work for the county and will be, quote, knocking down the doors to get here. And I think this is the step in that direction. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks. And looks like Jill's next.
Hi, my name is Jill Coleen. I am a fiscal assistant for public health. I've been with the county for four and a half years. I just wanted to talk about how much it's meant to me to be part of this workplace culture working group. I've been part of it since the beginning and the first cohorts that helped draft the document. I want to keep participating. It's been a really meaningful experience to me. I've always said that I'm the county's biggest cheerleader. I love working here. I want other people to love working here too. I love my job and our culture is great, but I think that we can always improve. We always have room to do better and that's what we're trying to do here with this workplace culture initiative.
Thank you, Jill. And I have Jimmy. I can't read your last name. My eyes are bad.
It's okay. Garrosby, in case you guys are wondering. Jimmy Garrosby. And let me take my mask off too, please. First, I want to say, my name is Jimmy Garrosby. I've been, I'm a vocational counselor and I'm also a current union president with Ask Me Local 1684. At the beginning of when I first found out about the workplace culture initiative to change, I felt obligated to participate, not just as a union member, but also as an individual because I'm pretty fortunate to work in an environment that I feel respected. I got a good supervisor who really encourages my professional development as well as concerned for my personal development as well. I participated in the phase one, the working group, and I'm currently working on phase two. And my main reason is because it was an obligation, it was not just an obligation, but it's an honor and a privilege to work with such like minded people to participate in changing our culture. I wanted to keep the momentum going and as, if my time permits, I will continue with phase three and phase four as well. It's been a great experience to work with others who are from different parts of the county and I realize that I'm one of the lucky ones who has a good work environment, but I also realize that there's other departments and other areas of the county that need to, need some improvement. And that's why we're here to help that, that thought. On that note, because I don't want to take too much of your time, what I would like to do is read a quote from Leo Buscaglia. It says, "Don't spend your precious time asking, why isn't the world a better place? It will only be time wasted." The question to ask is, how can I, or how can we make it better? To that, there is an answer. And on that note, you know, I think that captures the essence of what we've done here so far and hopefully will continue to go forward. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Jimmy. And I wanted to ask Bennett, Director Hoffman, I know that there's hands up and I don't know if some of them are part of your team. Do you have other members of the team that are not on as Zoom or are these just, are these folks potentially county employees who would like to comment on the item? I just want to find out from somebody who knows first.
I think we did have one more member of the team that was going to speak and then there may be some, also some county employees that want to weigh in on the effort as well.
Okay. And is Lucinda, is that Lucinda that was wanting to speak?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Well, welcome, Lucinda. I was picking your name, going, I think she might be part of this.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Chair Bass and members of the board for inviting me in today. I just have a few comments I wanted to share. I've been employed with the county of Humboldt since 2006. I joined the county team because I'm a public servant at heart and very committed to serving the community of our Humboldt County citizens. I participated in the Great Workplace Culture Change Process. It was an eye opening and rewarding experience. The steering committee began by developing a draft culture statement, then filtered it through our cohort groups comprised of county employees that spanned across departments and management levels. The cohort groups participated in larger strategic groups discussions and smaller, more vulnerable group discussions. I found that this balance fostered a comfortability for participants to share professional and personal life experiences that directly impacted their job satisfaction and work performance. During the working group that I participated in, we refined the culture statement, that draft statement that the steering committee came up with. And we kind of worked it into a culture statement of values and action attributes that reflect the mind and the spirit of the county team into vision statements before you that you see today. It was a wonderful collaboration of our team. I'm so proud of the county team for the way that we came together to work on this project, for the work that we produced and for the ongoing commitment that we have to implementing this vision. I ask that each member of the board join us in this commitment to implement and realize this vision and I thank you for your time today.
All right. Thank you, Lucinda. All right. Any supervisors, or I can go, I'll go up to the public for public comment first. We do have a couple of hands up. This is on an item of, this was, you just heard about, so 5300. Press star 610 mute.
Yeah, this is Adam Lustig, Los Coast Populist. Yeah, I was reading this agenda item as I was going through the agenda and, you know, it's great cultural diversiveness, you know, I'm in agreement with all of it. No one should be discriminated against for any reason. But I also noticed that it highlights once again the selective authoritarianism by many on the board. You know, there's nothing in there about a person's medical choices, which it's very much like a religious choice. You know, you may choose to believe in a religion that, you know, highlights creationism versus some people believe in evolution or your religion may be anti abortion or it may be against abortion, which, you know, those are medical biological type things. But then when it comes to someone like myself that chooses to practice natural medicine and, you know, for the most part stays away from pharmaceuticals and traditional doctors, it's okay to discriminate against me. It's okay to be prejudiced against me. It's okay to make me have to take a COVID test when someone who's vaccinated doesn't, even though the whole reason why the vaccinated and unvaccinated have to wear masks according to the CDC is that both equally transmit. The virus can both be infected. I mean, we've seen that around the world. And even though, you know, all your department heads and the majority of the people that called in when this decision was made were in favor of item one, you guys slipped item two in there and you're making people test. So, you know, I just wanted to highlight that this is just yet another example of the selective authoritarianism by many on the board. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then we will go to 0326 and I believe that might be Mr. Wilson. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I've been through all these years of all these committees and the, oh, I went through the minority first committee, the human resources committee, the, they always give a different name for them and all. A lot of them create useless things and you waste your time and you, but it's nice to divert and not have to work at your regular job. But anyway, what I found is that the one thing that they, that the agencies always miss is they don't ever say, thank you. You say, thank you. You say what you liked about whatever they did and then you say, thank you again. And then, then that's it. That's, that's maybe the, maybe you'll only get 10 of those in your lifetime. But, you know, you work for, because you work, because you like whatever you're doing, hopefully. But it's nice to have something like that said. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. That's true. All right. And we have no more hands up from attendee queue, so we'll go back to the board. And I guess we can all want to say thank you for working on this. I think it's, I think it's above and beyond the call of duty and totally appreciated. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I do want to thank both, especially the staff and the directors that worked to get it this far because, you know, there's more, there's more to do and certainly there's improvements that need to be. And as the culture isn't just how the human interface, but it's also the physical interface in terms of where people work and all the other things. And so, so much of that, you know, is on the, you know, we're responsible ultimately to try and create that space that is, is, is good for people to work and be in and all those things. And so I just really appreciate it. And public servants, this, I mean, I always say it's like the county employees are public servants. I, every one of them I've ever met and known has been, that has been number one in their, in their, in their, what they want to do is serve and, and in turn, we need to serve our public servants, right? We need to, we need to do what we can to be supportive of that. And I think that this is a, is a great way forward and I really appreciate all the hard work. And if anyone knows me about vision statements, not my favorite thing in the world to have to, to do. And I really appreciate anyone who does that well. And in this case, I have to say, these vision statements are like very concise and to the point then, and they're not unnecessarily flowery. They really are just really core and I really appreciate it. And so thanks for the effort. And with that, I'll make a motion to, to accept this report. So that's it.
We have a motion to accept the report. Is there a second?
I'm all second and also want to thank staff for all their hard work and energy that they've put into this initiative.
All right. Thank you. We look forward to hearing more, for sure. I didn't want to let the person, there's someone in the public who had their hands up, but that, the public comment period closed, so we are back to the board and, which has a motion on the floor and a second. And I don't see any other hands up. I know we've kept staff a long time this morning trying to get to this point. So Nikki, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Okay, great. Can you hear me? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bischnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Midron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes by zero.
Thank you all for being here. And then we will now move to the item pulled from the consent calendar, which is D11. Let's see. Who pulled that? CAO Hayes. Supervisor Bone?
Yes, Chair Bass. Supervisor Bone pulled this item for discussion.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, I pulled this for a couple of reasons. One, the community outreach team that we have working now is doing a great job and I, and, but I think what we want to do is, is instead of this, this is still probably, except for the pandemic, this is still the number one item we face every day. And for a lot of us, we look at our window or who are here and we see it on a constant basis. And you're always wondering, when there, when there's people in mental distress or some sort of distress in weather like this, or even when it's nice out, you wonder, are we doing enough? Have we talked to them? And it's, it's not like they're going to come down and knock on our door where our office is on Clark or whatever and say, hey, I, you know, I could use some help. We need to take the battle, the efforts, everything we want to do to them. And so I just, I want to thank Director Beck and her team for stepping up. I'd love to see another one of these teams because this, obviously, we're going to be able to reach these outlying areas of Willow Creek, Southern Humboldt to address these issues. It's not an easy fix. It's not a cheap fix, but it is an issue. We spend so much time, effort and money and we lose a lot of value in our community because sometimes we don't address this as we should or we don't seem to. So I think this is a great step forward. I wanted to recognize DHHS for doing this and providing another team out there because I don't think people realize how much we actually do for mental health, homeless. We're out, we're out helping people trying to buy, trying to buy and build housing units. We do a lot and it's, it's a huge ask and it's a huge task. But I think what we're doing is we're proving right here that we have the people in place that are reaching forward and doing it. And that's, that's why I pulled it. We, we put so many things on consent and just blanket knock them out. And I think people need to realize that there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes. It takes quite a while to get this put in place, get the people. So I just, it was just a shout out for DHHS and for us to be aware that they're going to be out there. And hopefully these teams are on the street. I would love to see two people in every car. I would like to see cars out there stopping and talk to these people that are under the overhangs and saying, is there other things we can do for you? Do you want to take advantage of the TAP program where we do the transportation assistance so they can, they, you know, they can go home to their loved ones and maybe straighten out what their issues are? So, so I, that's the only reason I pulled it. It just seemed like a big enough item and a, and a worthy enough item to talk about.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. I DC Director Beck on.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Bone. And I appreciate the recognition and mainly for staff. The work that they do is really hard. We've had one team for years that did this work in the outlying areas and now the two teams will allow them to be sometimes in two different ends of the county at one time. So I'm looking forward to the continued work and, and really I'm just grateful for the staff that are doing this work. So thanks for the recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Beck. And we'll go out to public comment. And we have one hand up. It's 1041. This is to speak on the item regarding the community health outreach worker team.
I'm sorry, I was actually, had my hand raised while Adam was giving his call on, on the last call and item and I don't know why, but I wasn't called on.
Actually, thank you very much. I had actually mentioned that the hand came up after I went back to the board, so it, that's why we didn't go back out to public comment. So, but thank you. I don't see any hands up for this item. We'll go back to the board. And any supervisors wish to comment on this? Supervisor Wilson?
I'd like to thank Supervisor Blake for highlighting this work. I really appreciate it. And with that, I would like to make a motion to move forward staff recommendation.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
So, the motion's been seconded. Any further discussion by board? So, the motion has been seconded. Any further discussion by board other than it's a good thing, we're excited about, and thank you also Supervisor Bone for pulling it? Anyone with their hands up? Nikki, do we have a roll call vote?
Sure. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes by zero.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to try to squeeze in this one. A matter is initiated by board members. This item comes to us from Supervisor Bushnell. And it's to consider reopening the board chambers to in-person meetings. So I will go to her to start this, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you through the chair. We haven't had any discussions since we didn't open in August. And I wanted to get an update first from our clerk, where, where we are in the motion we had made to try to get hybrid motion available in the chambers, and then also to have the discussion. If, I've had a lot of people ask, constituents ask, and a lot of community, community members ask when we are thinking about going back to in-person. I did a search on other boards in California where almost every supervisor board is open. I think two are not, including us, and school boards are back in person. Most all school boards are back in person, so I wanted to bring the discussion to the board.
All right, thank you. So we do have our clerk of the board. Kathy Hayes on. Kathy, is this, are you? There you go.
Yes, sorry about that. I was trying to get myself unmuted. Yes, back in July, your board took action to direct staff to move forward with trying to provide the necessary equipment and software to provide teleconferencing component to live meetings in the board chambers, so that we could provide services for members of the public as well as department heads and staff members who need to participate in live meetings but could not be in the chambers while a live meeting was happening. We are currently working with our partners Access Humboldt, with our IT department, and also our, our maintenance, Public Works Department maintenance folks, in trying to upgrade the equipment in our board chambers, which includes upgrading our sound system, which is necessary in order to continue providing a Zoom or a type platform or a similar platform to allow for public comment callers to call in who can't be present in the board chambers. That equipment is a bit delayed, obviously, due to things that are going on related to the pandemic shipping issues, the availability of the equipment. We are, we've been meeting regularly to stay on top of where we are with the equipment. Once that equipment has been received and installed, we will be able to quickly implement an in-person meeting with a side-by-side teleconferencing component. I do anticipate, and this is, and quite honestly, it's all predicated on receiving of the equipment. Once the equipment is received, we believe that we can move pretty quickly, I mean, getting it installed, tested, and ready to go in conjunction with live meetings. Right now, I have reached out to Access Humboldt to see if we could get a better idea of when we might think we're going to receive the equipment. I haven't heard back from them, but I do want to reiterate that they've been wonderful partners. They will be the individuals that will be maintaining the equipment for us once we've received it and installed it in the board chambers. So currently, we do not have the equipment, unfortunately. I would anticipate that we could be fairly certain that the equipment will be received and installed and ready to go in a live meeting by the end of the year. At least that's my goal, and I do believe that that's achievable.
Right. Thank you, Kathy. Could I ask, CEO Hayes, I was curious that do all five board members need to be in chambers to have a meeting in person, or is there options for them to be telecommunicated?
I believe that they, we can offer a telecommunication option for board members, although the, the Senate bill that dictates this is, does have some ambiguity in it. I would defer to County Council Billingsley if, if he is available to provide his insight on that.
Thank you through the chair, Supervisor Bushnell. I'd have to look into it a little bit more, but it's likely if there was just one or two supervisors, we may have to revert to the usual rules regarding teleconferencing, meaning that the location you are teleconferencing from has to be noticed and available.
Okay, thank you. So my other reason for bringing this to the board is I wanted to have the discussion with my fellow supervisors on how they're feeling. I know that our numbers for COVID have been declining somewhat. And by no means do I mean that it's not out there. Of course it is, but I, we have just had no conversations since August about returning to chambers.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Any supervisors wish to weigh in? Supervisor Bone?
I'm, I'm in the office every day, so I don't, I don't have a problem. I'm out in the public every day. And I, I just think that all the responses I'm getting, people feel like they want to get their money's worth out of us. Not that they don't, but I mean, I don't know why going into chambers safely, like 50-plus other counties have, can't be acceptable. I, it, it I did have to do a meeting from home when I was, had on my 10-day quarantine for COVID. And I would hate to go through that technological nightmare and the sound and everything else and what we've gone through today and please push, please do. I really enjoyed the nine years previous to work, eight and a half, nine years, where we got to have everybody in the chambers. And we got to see, you know, both our, our accusers and our people wanting to put their input into it. And I, I think that's what we are elected for. So as soon as the, as soon as we, they say it's safe enough, like the other 50-plus counties have decided, I would, I don't have a problem. And I don't know if we have to reinvent the wheel and do everything else, because again, there's a lot of other counties. We could probably get a poll from RCRCC, CSAC, or any of them and ask them how the other counties are doing it.
Hey, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the reasons why we're behind the curve is because we've been behind the curve on our numbers relative to other counties, too. I mean, we're not, we're really not one of the best. We're one of the worst for COVID numbers. So that's put us a bit behind, which is fine. I think, I think the goal of getting into the chambers is good. We should definitely be moving in that direction. I don't think that the, if we choose to go into chambers and choose a hybridized option, the technological changes or challenges that were just mentioned by Rex and others is, don't go away. They actually, were probably going to be a bit more complicated. And so I just want to make sure that if we move in that direction, where we temper expectations with relationship to the reliability of, of that. And, and although we work on wanting to have all the input we can and have it be reliable and accessible, understanding that we'll be putting kind of two technological realms together, and we've had some issues with that. And, and as, as of other boards around the state have had some issues with that, actually a lot of issues. Some are doing better than others, and we'll have to look to see where we can do that if we decide and to, to take that comment from everywhere. Because again, one of the issues with the hybridized version, and even with what we have is, at some points, you're not going to know where comments are coming from. I mean, literally, a person can come, call in from Madagascar to our, to our meeting. And, and then when issues become national, it could be, we, we will have some challenges associated with that. And so I, I want more and better comments, but I also want to make sure that, that we're, that are, that we have the capacity as an organization and as humans to absorb and, and get all that information. So I'm willing to have this conversation and move in that direction. I think it's, it's, I would like to be in the chambers. And then also, in terms of safety and our protocol, I'm noticing some places also have their masks on the whole meeting. So, I mean, there's something about that, too, which is, I mean, right now, we get to, we can mostly look at each other's faces and that has some benefit. So I don't, I'm, I, I'm not running in that direction, but I'm certainly, I, I would like to have us move in that direction. So that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. CEO Hayes, do you know if, I certainly think the option for a call in for our rural constituent is a, is a good idea, but do you know if it's required that we have a hybrid option in chambers? Is that required?
Again, I see Jefferson popping in, and he can speak to that.
Through the chair. No, it is not required. There was potential legislation, but it was only for counties over 250,000.
So we could effectively go back into chambers and offer that hybrid mode when it's available? Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, and I'd like to offer, too, that, you know, before we moved into this space, and even now, people can call supervisors, email supervisors. There's all sorts of other methodologies to emote opinion to us. And, and they're just different. Some of them are actually even, depending on the, what the information you're trying to project, it's, it's better and more efficient. I will say, I have been impressed with all my supervisor, my, the supervisors that I work with here on this board in terms of really consuming all the information and, and emails and the responding, and responding and those sorts of things. And so I just want to say that, that is, there are modes of communication that work as well, besides just the two minutes or three minutes, excuse me, on this.
Thank you. I have a question for the clerk of the board. Kathy, you here? Oh, there. Kathy, a couple, a couple of questions for you. I mean, in theory, if we wanted to go back prior to getting a hybrid model, so that we could do that. Drawbacks of that are, there's quite a few, like we don't know how many people can actually fit in the chambers. And going back to the days, I know Supervisor Bone mentioned his previous nine years. I can remember how many times I've heard him not happy that staff sits in the audience for an hour and a half waiting for their items to come up because something else gets in the way, you know? So I mean, there's definitely some, some benefit in, in having the remote abilities. But I think we have to recognize that if we go back without them, we are looking at something that's going to be more complicated, I think, to, to do as well. I mean, no matter how we look at this, this is not going to be a simple process. And then, gosh, what else was I thinking? Yeah, I just, I guess my question to you, Kathy, would be is, is, I know we're saying we can get it up and running as soon as possible, but we're worried about shipping. Is anyone giving us any kind of basic timeframe?
No, and, and I did reference that earlier, Supervisor or Chair Bass. In our current situation, obviously, everyone is experiencing slowdowns in getting equipment, supplies, all of those things. There's a lot of things due to the pandemic and COVID that are affecting your ability to get things in a timely fashion. We are checking on the equipment weekly to see when we might be going to receive it. I'm not aware of any, any delays in the equipment itself. It's just getting it here and getting it installed, and we're trying to stay on top of that. I do agree that there will be some issues with starting meetings without the teleconferencing component, because that would require anyone participating in a meeting via presentation, a department head would need to be present in the chambers, because the Zoom ability would not be available until that equipment is installed. So that would be an issue for us.
Okay, thank you. I see CEO Hayes has her hand up, and Supervisor Bushnell had her hand up first, so I don't know. Supervisor, or CEO Hayes?
No, I just was lowering it because I thought you called on me.
Okay, no, sure, go ahead. I just saw your face moved over there, so you took your hand down. Yes.
Alicia, would you like to go first, or?
You go right ahead.
So I, I want to ask the question about having department heads come to present to the chambers. Is that not how it's always been done?
Um, when you're asked, I'll, I'll answer it. It's always been done. I think the challenge is that it's, sometimes they'll wait for hours, such as like today when we have an item from planning and building, that we may not get to now until after lunch. You do have staff that take out of their day to actually sit in the meeting. So that's one of the challenges that, that I see at times. Not all the time, for sure.
But that's what they, that's their job, to present to the board, whether it be in chambers or beyond Zoom.
Yes, but if you'll hear Supervisor Bone in the future say, we're spending a lot of money per hour waiting for all the staff out there to get back to their jobs. So it, it depends how you look at it. So, anyway, I, maybe the CEO has an option or a question, an answer as well.
I, I just wanted to say in regards to the audio visual, I would expect that that will not be shipped and installed until likely around the first of the year. So just to frame your discussion in anticipation of when that's going to occur, I, I would suspect that it's going to take a bit of time. So I, if you're looking for a goal post, I think the first of the year would be a good expectation for that to be available and ready. Also, I mean, just, just based off of this meeting today, you have 41 participants. So that's what staff is speaking to in terms of the anticipated number of people who will be participating in chambers. 41 is, is certainly a crowd that will need to be managed, some in terms of social distancing and masking. So that is a consideration for your staff. Also, one last parameter that I'll just throw out there, speaking with Dr. Hoffman, who is on the line today, and may, may also be able to provide some benchmarks or data that we can monitor to establish when going back into chambers would be best for us as an organization. We currently fall in the red tier according to the CDC data tracking. That, that tier recommends you refrain from large gatherings. A benchmark that we could potentially strive to meet would be going into the yellow tier, which allows for more flexibility in terms of gathering in, in confined spaces. And, and I see that Dr. Hoffman has popped on, so he may have some insight as well.
Dr. Hoffman, did you want to add to that? There you are. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, board, and thank you for having me here today. And yeah, I think the, you know, just in framing the discussion for your board and, and, you know, getting the request for the information yesterday about where we are now and where, and kind of thinking about where we were as a county when the decision was made to go back to in-person back in July. The decision was made in July and then was scheduled for August. And, you know, we certainly are clearly on the down slope from this surge. There's no question of that. I think the data is now several weeks of solid, you know, reduction in cases, reduction in hospitalizations. We are not yet to a place where we were when your board made that decision in July to return to chambers. At that point, we did not have a mask mandate in our county. The hospitalizations were low, and we had had two months of pretty solid low numbers going into that decision. So, you know, I think those are just, you know, just to frame where we're at right now, it is improving. And it's definitely come off the, you know, the worst three months of this entire pandemic for our county. And so I'm hopeful, and I think we're all hopeful, that this is coming to And so I'm hopeful, and I think we're all hopeful, that this is coming to, you know, at least the end of this chapter. But, you know, I think looking forward, it would be good to try to put some daylight between ourselves and any decision. So happy to answer any questions about that. And like Alicia mentioned, in terms of, you know, the CDC recommendations and the sort of metrics that we're watching daily here at Public Health to give us a sense of when things are feeling, you know, quote, "back to normal."
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Supervisor Bushnell.
So I wanted to, through the chair, I think you, I wanted to respond or ask Alicia with her 41 people that she would anticipate in chambers. Out of those 41 people, I think we've had five speakers today. So previous to Zoom option, if our county staff or anyone wanted to watch our meetings, they would go to Access Humble, right? And watch the live feed?
That is correct. Yeah, you can certainly Zoom through Access Humble if you're just interested in staying attuned to the meeting and not participating in public comment.
So do you think that, for instance, some of these people on here are just zooming in because it's convenient to watch our meeting? And that previous, when we were in chambers, when you all were in chambers, that that's probably where they went to get their information or to watch our meetings?
I guess, I mean, it depends on the content of your agenda oftentimes. And, you know, recognizing that you haven't had an opportunity to be in chambers. There certainly were times where we had to call a fire marshal and have them post up here to ensure that we were maintaining capacity, just in terms of that room in a normal environment. And that was, you know, not the norm, but it certainly happened, what I would say is considered a somewhat regular basis. So the content of the agenda really does drive the public participation. And this being more strenuous, if we were in a circumstance where we didn't have a telecommuting option, I think that providing a telecommuting option will certainly motivate some of those who find it more cumbersome to come into the courthouse to participate from home. It certainly provides a convenience option.
Thank you. So my, once again, my reason for bringing this to the agenda today is that we've had no discussion, our constituents have no idea what our thoughts are. And so if we're wanting that telecommunication option, which I believe our community wants also, perhaps we could say we're looking at going back into our chambers in January or December, something like that, so that our constituents can have an idea that it's on our minds.
Thank you. I'm actually wondering if maybe that could be part of the COVID update, too, every two weeks, saying, hey, where are we on getting our technology in line to get back in the meetings? You know, because we haven't heard, you're right, we haven't had any, we haven't really talked about it on screen where people can actually, or actually, we haven't got to talk about it between ourselves either, I mean, as a group. Supervisor Wilson?
There are, I mean, there are some technological, I would say, steps that one could take between what we have now and full audio/video at a meeting in that way, you know, interactive audio/video. And we did in the past occasionally have people call in, and it's possible to do that. It would just take a staff member to manage that. I mean, it doesn't, I'm just, there is an intermediary that might function. I mean, we could go back into chambers without, just the way it was before, without, and of course, with masking and distancing and management of people, again, whether there's too many to get in the chamber or not. And I don't know, I mean, maybe Alicia or maybe CAO Hayes can say or talk about, I think, have you reached out to other local municipalities or jurisdictions and seen where, how they're managing this without, you know, complete audiovisual updates?
I reached out to the local jurisdictions. Candidly, City of Eureka said, "Don't do it," and said we could have a lengthy discussion as to why that was, why that was his summation. That came from City Manager Miles Latterly. City of Arcata said that their experience hasn't necessarily been negative, but there is certainly some logistics that provide some pain points as we adjust, as they adjust through in providing the proper media to both their department heads, their council, and the public. City of Fortuna had a similar feedback, the City of Arcata, they're providing a Zoom option. And it's, you know, the media is going to be a bit of a challenge for a few weeks once we do go back into closed session, or excuse me, into chambers to figure out how we can best transmit the public, transmit the board, manage the feedback that would come through telecommuting. So, you know, by and large, those jurisdictions are doing it, have been doing it, and are experiencing some growing pains, which without a doubt is something that we would go through as well. Clerk Kathy Hayes has also polled some of our sister counties that are surrounding us and could share the data that she derived from those agencies.
Okay, I was just reading, excuse me, I was just reading an email I got from our partner Access Humble related to equipment that I would like to share with the board, which will kind of clarify some of the supply chain shortage problems that they're having. One Correl currently states that it's extremely difficult to estimate equipment deliveries due to supply chain shortages and high demand. And we are also heading into the holiday seasons, which tends to slow things down from a shipping perspective. He also said, "We've received deliveries that have taken two to three months to receive equipment." And once the equipment is received, he does state, "We would need a two-week window for installation and testing." So the really key is receiving the equipment. It's just, it's difficult to determine when that might happen. So I do believe CAO Hayes' estimate of after the first of the year is probably a good target to shoot for as far as receiving the equipment and having it installed. Now, with respect to the information CAO Hayes was just referring to, I did poll all of our neighbor counties yesterday related to who was holding in-person meetings? Were they providing a teleconferencing component? What their total number of active cases were, hospitalizations, percentage of, and percentage of fully vaccinated individuals within their county? So I'm going to try and share my screen. If it doesn't work, I will read you this. I'm not really up on all of the, let's see if I can get this to show. Well, doesn't look like it's working. Okay, um, let me see if I can get this.
Kathy, I can also share, if you like, you sent me the data this morning somewhere else.
Open it there.
I did not have it pulled up, though. So give me one moment.
Drag it over here. And now go share screen. And now click on it right there.
Okay. I will share my screen containing the data that Kathy has compiled. Are you seeing this word document matrix right now?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, would you like to go through describing this document?
Sure. Obviously, these are our neighboring counties. Currently, there are two of the seven counties, including ourself, that are not holding in-person meetings. The others have been meeting the entire time during the pandemic, but providing a Zoom option for members of the public. They have also been allowing members into the live component of the meeting. That should be quantified. So they're allowing members to attend in person, as well as providing a Zoom component for those who cannot attend. And as you see here, Mendocino County is the only other county besides Humboldt that is not meeting in person. But they are providing, they're doing Zoom-only meetings currently. And these are the number of case rates that, these are all within the last week. I took this information off of their updated COVID website pages. Their numbers of hospitalizations, and then the total numbers of citizens within their county that are fully vaccinated.
Kathy, I have a question.
Sure.
Are you saying we're down to one hospitalization in Humboldt? It's good if I missed that.
That was as of yesterday, correct.
Was that one new hospitalization or the total?
One new, one new hospitalization.
Okay, new hospitalizations. Okay, thank you.
This is a week snapshot, the previous week.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just for trying to clarify, when you say, so the Zoom, is it Zoom with video or Zoom without video for those various? And are they pulling people in as panelists one at a time, or are they just doing it the way we do it? So I'm just wondering, because, say, like on the Coastal Commission, people get pulled in by, you know, they get pulled in as panelists, and they're managed by staff. And it's, you know, it's a methodology that, and then people, and then there's also, on some of these, and I don't know if they do with these, but on, say, like the Coastal Commission, you have to sign up the day, you know, 5:00 PM the day before. And then also, or you have to really have, be clicked in at the beginning of the item, or, you know, there's like cutoff times on some of this stuff. And so I was just wondering, like, how are these, how are these, Shasta, Trinity, Lake, Del Norte, Napa, and managing these? And do they feel like they're successful?
So Supervisor Wilson, I did ask that question of all of the clerks that I talked to in these counties. All of them are, their individuals are not pulled in as a panelist, unless they are a participant on an agenda item that has been agendized for that particular meeting and need to address the board separately. Public commenters are pulled in and managed by staff in a queue, like we do here in Humboldt County. So that is how all of the public commenters are being addressed. They are not pulled in as panelists. They call into a number, they press star six. They are called upon by their chairman to comment when they get to a specific item. So they are handling it just like we are here currently, and it's all managed by staff.
And we have that equipment.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Bone?
I'm just wondering, I'm wondering, and we have that equipment, because I'm just wondering how Lake and Trinity beat us to the punch to get all this equipment, so.
Yes, and we, we do not currently have the equipment to do a side-by-side. We are scheduling Zoom and the Zoom platform as a total teleconferencing. What we need to be able to do is upgrade our equipment so that we can do a side-by-side in-person as well. And we need to integrate that equipment from Zoom into our existing system to capture voice, audio, all of those things, and into our agenda management system.
Through the chair, I mean, maybe if, it seems like there's still some work to be done here, and maybe a few supervisors might want to get together as a sub, you know, ad hoc to kind of work with staff to get to that place. Or, I'm just trying to move us to a, to a direction here, that's all. And then, of course, we have to take public comment. I apologize for, I feel like we've kind of bogarted this a bit, and we need to probably do that.
I think ad hoc sounds an interesting concept. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, Kathy, I'm wondering, the other counties, are they? So we have a Zoom platform. Is it not possible to have, like, a computer in the chambers with a staff member letting people in and out?
We could do that, but there had been significant issues. The very first meeting we did, teleconferencing when the pandemic first hit, created some significant issues for board members being able to Zoom in. Because whenever, I'm not an IT expert, and maybe, I don't see we have an IT person on, but when we're marrying computers together to try and capture the things that we need to capture, Access Humboldt needs to capture the signal to be able to broadcast and stream the meeting. All of those things need to fit together, and it takes, Mike's right, or Supervisor Wilson's right, we could do it with computers, but it does not function well and creates problems for members of the public. And that's why we need the equipment upgrade. So we could do it, but just understand that there are going to be technical issues ongoing at every meeting if we do a kind of a piecemeal computer here, computer there. We already plan to have staff, people, once the equipment is installed, man individual functions during the meeting so things flow smoothly. And we could do that, but it's not, we're going to have technical problems. Computers crash. We already are experiencing those with the existing equipment that we have. Just be aware.
I understand that, thank you. But, so when this, when you first, when you did it at first, was 18 months ago, I believe, and so I think we also need to recognize that the platforms have gotten better, stronger, and I understand the technical difficulties. And we've gotten, as an organization, better with the Zoom platform. So I think it was very new, you know, 18 months ago, when you were trying to do it in-person.
CAO Hayes?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to Supervisor Bushnell's comment that Access Humboldt is currently working with the City of Fortuna to implement their hybrid model. So, you know, ideally, they have, you know, had some learning lessons as they transition through that process. And one of the good things of not being the trailblazer in this arena is that we can, we can benefit from those learning lessons that other entities have experienced and hopefully have a bit of a smoother transition. Although, as Kathy has indicated, technology is always a bit of a troublesome aspect at times. So without a doubt, we'll have some, some growing pains.
So thank you for that. Planning Commission, is Director Ford on here? So I believe Planning Commission, Alan Bongio is in chambers. Director Ford will be in chambers, and Access Humboldt. And you two are on computers. Is that true, Director Ford?
Yes, that's, that's true. We operate all on computer. So Access Humboldt doesn't use the in-chamber video equipment or audio equipment. It's all done basically via Zoom. One of the limitations there, though, that we do have, is that for all laptops to be operating, we need to have separate internet sources, because otherwise we'll overwhelm the internet and the ability of the Wi-Fi to function. And so there are some constraints there.
Okay, thanks so much, Director Ford.
If it's all right, we do have some hands up. Why don't we go ahead and take public comment, and then we can come back to the board for conversation? Okay, so 5300, you're the first one. Press star six, unmute, and you'll have your three minutes.
Hey, this is Adam Lustig, Lost Coast Populist. So I just went on the county dashboard, was looking at the numbers, and, you know, 109 deaths. That's 0.0008% of our population. 421 hospitalizations, that's 0.003% of our population that have been hospitalized. I fail to see how this is even an emergency, let alone a reason to not have in-person board meetings. You know, I've been speaking to the board regularly for the past couple of months, and many people have approached me in public and thanked me for standing up for their rights. And, but have also expressed, you know, that they would also like to speak to the board. But especially with senior citizens, they've had a hard time dealing with the technology. And even the more technologically savvy people have found it difficult to use the system. I've also witnessed people getting their time cut short from their three minutes. I mean, I saw some. I mean, I saw somebody today who had their hand up when I was speaking, yet they didn't get a chance to speak. You know, just seen a lot of frustration with people that I know calling in. So this, you know, and I think we've seen just the technical difficulties today and throughout these meetings. So I think it's good that it sounds like you guys are looking at moving off of this platform. And I do also like the idea though, that, yeah, we are a rural county and we should have a call-in option as well, because, I mean, some people are two, three hours plus from coming in, to come in, and to, it would take a whole day to drive in, sit, wait to talk, I mean, that's a lot. So, I, I mean, I like the direction you're going, I'd like to see it as soon as possible, and I, and I think the hybrid option is good. So, yeah, that's what I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you. 1172, press star six, unmute. Three minutes, and... There you go, welcome.
Hi, my name's Catherine Gabitan. First, I'd like to thank Michelle for bringing this agenda item up to the Board of Supervisors. I also want to reference the Brown Act, which is Code 54954.3. It states that every agenda for regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for the members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public. I'm really grateful for you guys instating Zoom at the beginning of the pandemic, back when we weren't really sure how things would play out in the world and in our county. But as time now has gone, almost two years, 19, you know, we're going on 19 months. And as Adam just stated, the percentage of, the percentage of people affected in our county have been really low. And so I would like the board to go back to in-person meetings so that people of the public can directly address you. You know, the board members don't even know who, I'm just a, a voice on a box that's coming through. It's not like very personable. I don't think that you can see the emotion and the passion that I have on some of the things that I speak about, because you're not able to see me. I live very rurally, so I have to call in through a landline. But at the same time, I also appreciate that there is this Zoom. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been hearing callers call in, and really grateful for this option. I'm grateful too, because it's inspired me to become more active in the things that are happening in our county. And it's easy for people that aren't able to travel, that, you know, the three hours it would take them to get to the in-person meeting. So I think that the hybrid model is going to be the best way to serve all the people in our community, in our county. I want to thank Supervisor Wilson, who suggested coming up with an interim solution until we get that, you know, whatever the technology that that gentleman was talking about in, in place and installed, that there's other solutions. And for the board to just be very solution-oriented towards this hybrid model, because it's going to be the best way that you, as public servants and our elected officials, can serve all of your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is 5024. That's you, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, my name is John Murray. 20 years and 17 days ago, I was your CAO, and I want to point out one rule that may take effect here if you go to pre-COVID rules. The board has a rule that if a supervisor is within the county of Humboldt, they have to attend in person. We had one supervisor, I think it was Supervisor Smith, was on his way out of town, and he was going to phone in from Garberville, and when informed of the rule, he had to make it to Leightonville. So it's not insurmountable, but it's just if you are going to change things around, you need to be aware that you have your own rules to live with. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, so the next speaker is 1703. 1703. Press star six, unmute. Welcome.
Hello. Yeah, I just wanted to agree with the first few callers talking about how like the hybrid option is basically necessary for a couple of reasons here. For accessibility is one of them, like they were saying. And then the other reason is because we just need to be as safe as possible during this pandemic, and, you know, having as few people there as possible is good, but also some people need to be there. So we just need to have like a way to balance this out for everyone. And then I also wanted to mention about that table that I saw about the total active cases and hospitalizations in Humboldt over this past week. That's incorrect, and that was, that's the report for, over the weekend. So I can, I'll just read really quick, which is on the website under Humboldt Health Alert. So October 25th report was one hospitalization, 51 new cases. October 22nd report was one death, two hospitalizations, 33 new cases. October 21st, two hospitalizations, 10 new cases. October 20th, one death, one hospitalization, 23 new cases. And then October 19th is one death, five hospitalizations, 42 new cases. And that's over the past week. So I just wanted to be clear about that. I'm not sure about the other stats in that table either, but, yeah, just wanted to point that out. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 0326. Press star six, unmute.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. The telephone method is useful. The video is next to useless, because it's delayed about a minute or two from the phone. I think it is nice to have the telephone capability to speak, because as you get older, you can't always go take the 45 minutes to hour to get to town and coordinate everything like that. And then you, essentially, you spend a whole morning in, you know, in your place there. Looking at a person is part of your first constitutional right. In other words, seeing the first, the person's face, seeing their mouth move, and all that kind of stuff, that's part of the constitutional right that we have. And when you put the mask on, you might as well cover your face too, put glasses on. You don't even know who the person is, could be a robot. And so I think it's nice to go back to the constitutional rights. They always say, oh, the rights, the, the benefits to society outweigh the rights of the individual. And I hate to hear that, because to me, that means that we can be executed and it doesn't matter at all. So I do think that it, it's nice to have some sort of hybrid method so that the people in the far-out spaces can talk, but it's also nice to be able to come in and see the people who are talking and see their faces. And besides, the FDA, as I understand it, has never approved the masks to prevent the transmission of bacteria or viruses. So I, I don't know, you know, we're all, it's a political game that we're playing. So anyway, I, I do appreciate you going back to something that's compatible with both methods there, and hope you succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Our next speaker is 7429. That's you, press star six, unmute. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. This is Robi Ternorio. I, I very much understand the desire to meet in person, and although I do appreciate that the technical aspects could be challenging for you, there seems to be many, many benefits to the remote for your staff. Of course, it is their job to present to your board, but it's very inefficient, as, as your staff said, to pay for them to sit there waiting for the time for them to speak. I really appreciate being able to attend your meetings remotely rather than driving for four hours and then possibly spending the entire day. The cost of attending is, is quite significant for those of us who live far away, and it seems better for the climate that we can attend from our remote location. So I do support the proposal or the discussion that you wait to move to in-person until you have all the equipment that could provide the, the hybrid. The, the hybrid model is something that we've been, we've needed and, and asked for, for years. And apparently, the technology was there, it just took the, the pandemic to open it up for us. So I appreciate that side effect, and hope that you can come to an agreement that we, we wait till we have all the equipment needed. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Robi. Our next speaker is 3053. That's you, Thomas, press star six to unmute.
Still, good morning, not quite past noon. Thomas Mulder here. I think it would be good to get back to in-person, because all of you there are elected officials. I think the public has a right to face their elected officials. I, the gentleman that spoke a couple before me, that was quite interesting about the constitutional right, I'll have to look that up, of seeing someone's face when they're speaking deal. I mean, if that's in the constitution, maybe that's something that should be honored. So that way, our supervisors, we can see them speaking. I think it's very, very important to meet in-person, because you can see people's body language, and I, I feel it's a lot more personal as far as being able to better make decisions for our county. We've gotten to a point, right, following the Board of Supervisors, I would follow it on the legislature, I wouldn't be able to comment, but I'd send emails afterwards. But if I intended in-person, it was, you know, I was able to speak. So it really had to weigh what was important and what wasn't important, and some items you just sent emails in. But I've been really concerned with the way in which discussions have gone sometimes with the Zoom thing, because the discussions aren't being taken place in person. It's easy to be very, very comfortable to go very extreme different ways when you are not having to face your constituents. So I think it's important to figure out some sort of way to make a hybrid work. I think you guys at the beginning had some sort of call-in method, and it's been a long time since in-person meetings. The last one I remember is the, the guy's on the agenda later today. But that was at a Planning Commission when he got denied. So it's wild what we've done during COVID. So please get us back to ability to meet in-person. I've been to a decent amount of in-person events where, you know, things happen. And lastly, in the past chambers, you could drink water and also eat snacks during those long meetings. So is that going to be a no food and water? Because I don't know if that's against our violation, or a violation against our rights. So if that's the case, then would we need to have masks on if we're just snacking and drinking the whole time? Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. So our next one is 0151. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, Dottie Russell again. For the record, this was the second time I had to hit star six, not that hard, but I had to hit it twice in order to get unmuted. So I'm coding because I think that this issue of transparency is huge, and the more transparency we have, especially outline, with outlined areas, the better we can be, feel a part of a community and a county, and be treated as part of a community. So a number of things are not available to us in Southern Humboldt. Cal Works is not available, the Hope Center's not available. We're having to do a lot of tele-meds, which isn't working particularly well for some of the mental health patients, as far as coming to, to the Board of Supervisors' chambers when there's an issue that particularly involves Southern Humboldt or passion from Southern Humboldt. 100 people might drive up there, horrible for the environment, time-consuming, not healthy for people doing that anyway. So I definitely support the idea of embracing Southern Humboldt. Southern Humboldt is a part of the community. I've, for 20 years, been driving to meetings, all kinds of meetings pertaining to helping the community and helping people particularly at risk. So whatever we have to do from Southern Humboldt to participate in what you're doing without driving there is really important and really, really critical. The way for people to be empowered, the way for people to get involved and take account of, and be accountable is by letting them have a voice. If they don't have a voice, if people down here don't have a voice, they'll live in the woods, they'll live on the river bar, who knows what will happen? And it's very scary and very unfortunate for human beings to be feeling like they don't have a voice, they don't matter, and nobody really cares if they live or die. So I'm sure that's not the case, but that's how they feel. So it's wonderful that the state is really embracing this. I know Senator McGuire had a fantastic webinar the other day, worked out really well. He has some technology, so does, so do other departments in Sacramento. So if they have technology that can be used, let, let them loan it to us. Let's let them host one of these meetings, or, you know, all of them, until we can really embrace everybody in the county, not just in Southern Humboldt, and, and the places that are more local to, or more convenient to Eureka, but all the other places that are outlined too. You know, these people really need to be considered. I'm sure you all feel this way, because that's who voted you in. The people that want to have a voice, want to matter.
Thank you, Dottie. All right, thanks. And before I go, we have two hands up, and what I'm going to tell, because I know one of the speakers mentioned this, if I get to the last speaker and no hands are up, I will say we are on our final speaker. That doesn't mean people put their hands up then. So I need people to put their hands up when they want to talk early in the item, so that we're not constantly guessing. Because I can tell you, when you're in the board chambers, it's not going to be that way. It's who's not standing up. You know, it's, it's a very clear definition of when the last comments are made. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up about that. So there are two numbers left. If you are planning to call in, I would suggest doing it now and raise your hand. We've got 4998. You'll have your three minutes, and we'll go from there. And press star six, unmute. Welcome.
Hi, I also had to, like the previous caller, hit star six two times. I'm Allegra Sita, and I am in support of a hybrid model, simply because it generates a more equitable opportunity for everyone that wants to participate in the meetings, whether that be in-person or remotely. As a head of household, sole earner for my family, being able to call in and Zoom has given me the opportunity in the last year to be a more active citizen and a more informed in citizen, because I can tap in every Tuesday for the meetings. So that's it. I fully support the hybrid model, and I think it's imperative to do whatever's necessary to get the technology and make it available so that this can happen sooner than later. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Allegra, for calling in. And we are now on to our final speaker, 7108. Press star six, unmute. Whoops, sorry, my face isn't showing, but 7108.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I do want to say, someone else has their hand up. I said we were on our final speaker, so I am sorry for the next person. It was being after the timeline, and I'm going to start holding firm to that. So 7108, yes, please, you may start now.
I had to press the star six a few times, but I don't really have a problem with that. I totally support the hybrid model for reasons people have given. I totally support the hybrid model for reasons people have given. Public participation is essential to the democratic process. And it's one thing to be able to watch or listen, and it's another thing to be able to participate. And that's what I think this live remote option gives to people. With this pandemic, there's different levels of concern in the community. And there's a large portion of the community that would not go to in-person public meetings because of concerns about their health. So those people would be cut off if you didn't have that option. Many Humboldt County has the Climate Action Plan trying to come back on emissions, live, remote, being able to participate instead of driving all the way to Eureka hours on the road. And then there's the cost to drive to Eureka for many of us is a big cost that we can't really afford. So, yeah. And there's nothing in the Constitution about seeing people's faces. I understand that. Also, for the planning commission meetings, those are at night. And so please move forward with the hybrid option for people that feel comfortable to going to the meetings. And let's keep access for all of us in the outlined areas or even people in Eureka that don't feel comfortable going to indoor meetings. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you, Bonnie. All right. I am going to go back. I was going to go to Supervisor Bushnell, but Supervisor Wilson?
I just have a technical question maybe for, this is for Jefferson. And I'm just kind of wondering, like, well, legally, technically, we're really, if we go back to in person, we've only, you know, the requirement really by law, I think, is that we have in person and that, that offering call-in or video is an option to us, but not legally binding. And the reason I want to ask that question is because what happens, say, if we're in a meeting and the power goes out in certain part of the county or something like that? Where's the obligation of the board to be responsible to the technological ability of those trying to enter into the process during the meeting versus our ability to receive it?
Through the chair, I'm not sure all those logistics have been worked out at this point. I know if we were offering hybrid and then the hybrid option, we had a problem on the county side, that would be problematic. I'm not sure of the other scenario where someone may not be able to participate remotely. A lot of these scenarios haven't come up yet, but I'll also have to look through the legislation a little bit more.
Well, I guess what I'm just wondering about in terms of the robustness of if you're offering something beyond what's required, you know, and then you're announcing it. I guess this is something that, you know, staff and whoever wants to work on this with staff will have to figure out because, again, it's, we just want to make sure that we're not, we have process and then, you know, and we do the best we can. And that's why, for me, it's just the managing of expectations and the, you know, and in terms of both from ourselves, our staff, and from the public in terms of this communication mode and also understanding that there are other communication modes that, that can be redundant in this as well and redundant in a positive way.
Thank you. And I kind of wanted to go over, and you know, the thing with when we do go back in and if we've got, when we have the hybrid model, there's going to be some real defined rules for commenting, I mean, such as calling in, you know. It's, it's, it's got to be more structured so that we know when people are calling. And a lot of the folks who are calling in and watching us now, I'm glad we have the option, but they may not have been there in the past. And I'll give an example of when you're in the board chambers, when you've got groups speaking, basically the chair can say, you know, if you're going to speak, stand at the side of the room now. If no one's standing at the side of the room, when this last speaker, you know, while this last speaker is talking, that's the end of public comment. So what I am doing, like here, is I'm saying, you know, when there's, when there's the second hand and that person's speaking, then there's one other person after that that is clearly identified to speak. How we're going to do that in the chambers is going to be a little bit different. And I don't, I don't know exactly how that will be yet, but folks who are watching from the remote capacities at that time will hopefully kind of get, get in the habit of raising their hands up and getting in queues soon because I have a feeling that we may do the on-phone comments first and then move to the in-public comments and not go back to the on-phone. So there's a, there's a lot of things to be worked out, but it's just, it's, it's, you know, I don't mean to make someone feel I'm not letting them speak. It's just when I say X and then a hand pops up at the last minute, I would just have to keep going and open it, reopening, reopening. So that is the only reason I try to give a warning of this is the last one. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for that, Chair Bass. I, I just want to say that, you know, I've been elected for 10 months. And previous to that, for almost eight months, I listened to meetings via Zoom and tried many times to get in for public comment, press nine, press star six, press nine again. And so while I do understand what you're saying, the technical difficulties, as we've all been speaking of the last hour, happened and happened to me several times. I was never allowed to speak, never had my hand raised, even though I was repeatedly pushing those star nine or whatever it is. So I'm, but I do appreciate you saying what you just said because I do get quite a few emails that I tried to get in for public comment, I had my hand raised, I pressed the star nine. And so it does concern me some, you know, because of the technical difficulties and we seem to be cutting off public commenters. So, but I, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah. And what I would just suggest to people to, if they know they want to comment on this item or an item, press star nine as soon as you think you have an inkling, it's like, I want to comment. So like, but you're, you're absolutely right. We do have technical difficulties that also cause challenges on this. So being, being back to the board, we've had a lot of conversations. Supervisor Wilson, I was going to go to Supervisor Bushnell, but Supervisor Wilson had his hand up.
I just, I just want to jump in to say that we need some direction here. So I'm just, I'm hoping that somebody has some. And I'm, I'm, I'm turning to Supervisor Bushnell a bit, having initiated this conversation, which I think was a good thing to do. I'm glad she did that. I just was, you know, in the synopsis of what we've heard today, if she, if there's any concepts of some direction we might give, also to staff and maybe to ourselves. And so.
Well, I would really, I think, like to make a motion that we go to in-person board meetings as soon as our equipment is received. I would think the new year, January would be a good, would be two months that we could, you know, get our stuff together, let our department heads get adjusted to having to be back in person or if we have Zoom available. I do recognize that it's convenient for a lot of people having the Zoom options and that our staff utilizes the blackout mode to be able to keep working, you know, while they're waiting. And that's something I do want to recognize. You know, we have only two meetings in November and I believe only two meetings in December. Is that correct or three? So five more meetings before the first of the year. And one more next week, I guess, so six, six more meetings. So I think that we could maybe anticipate opening our chambers the first Tuesday in January with, if our equipment is available. Or just opening our chambers the first week in January.
Okay, I think, and there's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, that was, I don't know what, specifically what the motion is. It was kind of a long, I think the motion was January.
I heard.
I'd like to make a motion that we open our chambers the first week in January of 2022.
Assuming that the, the technology.
I don't think I want to have that as part of it because if we continue to get pushed out with deliveries, you know, I don't, I want us to anticipate and have an expectation for our constituents that we're going to try to open. You know, I'm hoping that our COVID numbers continue to decline, so I'd like to make a motion that we open our chambers the first Tuesday in January of 2022.
I'll second that, knowing full well Chairman Wilson will be able to handle that.
I don't know where I'll be, but, so, but I, the only, the only question I have with the relationship to this is, is there any tie to our COVID numbers? I mean, it's hoping that the COVID numbers go in this direction they're at. We hoped that several times before and so that.
So no, I wouldn't like to tie that as we did before in August. We could have an emergency number, an emergency meeting and resend that if our COVID numbers are not okay.
All right, then. Thank you.
And I suspect staff probably wants to have a clarification if that's with masks and social distancing.
I would like that to be whatever the current rules are, I think. I don't think that we should initiate things that, but we might be out of masks by then, hopefully. So I, do I need to add that on there and say?
I think, I think it's understood with, you know, what the current guidance is. Tracy, I saw her pop up. Does that sound, you have that in there? And I would just ask if we could have an update somewhere in maybe early December, how things are going? And that doesn't have to be an initial part of the motion. I just would like us to get kind of an update along the way.
How things are going as what? Whether we're getting our equipment or?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, just on the, that technology side, and it can just be an email to us. It doesn't have to be here. I just, like, like you said, we hadn't talked about this for a long time. It's like, okay, I don't want it to fall, I don't want it to fall off my radar. And then be helpful. CA O'Haze.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Just to, to the point you just made in terms of communication, we'll, we'll definitely make sure it gets out there. We can add a component to the COVID update. I send department heads weekly memos, we'll notify them and that. And, you know, we can also do some press around it as well so that everybody is fully aware of your board's intentions in moving forward.
All right. So we have a motion that's been seconded. Supervisor Madrona, sorry about that, I'm not seeing your face there. Almost forgot.
Yeah, you don't need to see my face. I'm home here, still recovering. At any rate, the good discussion, I could support the motion if it was for a hybrid option. I didn't hear that in the motion. I heard just coming back to live meetings, there may very well be medical reasons why one cannot attend, depending on where our COVID numbers are and everything else. And I appreciate that you said, yeah, we could check in in December on that, et cetera. But as it sits, I really can't support the motion unless it's for a hybrid option because I think almost everybody that spoke today was in favor of the hybrid option. You know, there's pros and cons to everything, in-person, Zoom, nothing's perfect in this world. But as noted by Kathy's survey of our surrounding counties, every one of them is doing the hybrid option. And so I could absolutely support moving towards in-person meetings with the hybrid option. And as John Murray said, you know, there is another rule the board has about if you're in Humboldt, that might need to be looked at and adjusted as well, depending on medical concerns on the part of individuals. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Madrona. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I support the hybrid motion. However, I would like to have the motion as it stands because what if our equipment isn't available for eight months? And we, we are, you know, out of COVID numbers, are we to not return to in-person because we don't have the hybrid because of shipping issues? So I, I'm hopeful that our hybrid, our hybrid equipment will be here that first week. But how long are we supposed to wait for our equipment and not go back into chambers?
Thank you.
So that, that's the reason I didn't include that. I can add that hybrid available as soon as equipment is available. I absolutely think that we should do the hybrid motion. Okay. Do you think that I should clarify in the motion?
Who seconded it? Rex? You seconded it.
No, I'll, I'll, how about this? I amend my motion that we go back into person meetings the first Tuesday of January 2022 with hybrid being an option as soon as equipment is available.
Supervisor Bowe?
Is hybrid Zoom, is that what I'm, is that the way I understand? Because that's what I noticed all the other counties were doing. So is hybrid, is, is that another terminology for Zoom? I'm just, this technological stuff, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but.
To me, hybrid means a multitude of ways, I mean, a couple of different ways to take part in a meeting. Supervisor Wilson?
I would say that hybrid is technology agnostic, but we do, we do Zoom now because that's what we do. And I think it's, I think it's highly likely that Zoom will be what we use. But I wouldn't care whether it was a phone or Zoom or what, it doesn't, it just needs to be a way for people to.
Option.
Remotely connect, that's all.
And I don't care whether it's Zoom or phone either, whatever options available to us. Kathy, can you be specific on the equipment we have ordered?
Yes. First of all, the audio in the chambers needs to be upgraded. That equipment is due to be replaced. We also will be installing TV monitors for better visual effects in the chambers to replace the outdated smart boards. That's been ordered as well. And then we have, we have another component, another software component that I haven't mentioned that's related to your board's ability to visually vote and allow members of the public to see how you vote on individual items during a meeting. It's called VoteCast. That will be part of what we roll out at the same time. Although the hybrid model is not contingent upon VoteCast being implemented, we just thought it was a good time to roll it all out at the same time.
So we have a sufficient hybrid availability coming of some sort?
Yes, there will, there will be some upgrades as far as the access Humboldt equipment, their tricaster needs to be replaced. We are going to be installing a new camera, an additional camera for better angles within the board chambers when you do return to live meetings. Those kinds of things are part of the equipment list as well. Predominantly, the most important are the audio equipment and TV monitors that will allow us to continue with the Zoom format, allow the members of the public to participate and also allow people to see you on the television screen during the Zoom operation in a live meeting.
Okay. So Supervisor Bass, Chair Bass, I'm going to have my motion with the amendment of a hybrid as soon as possible is what I would like to have go forward.
I suspect that's okay with the seconder?
Sure.
All right. Nikki, can you have a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Supervisor Bowe?
Sure.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madrona?
Yes, and thank you for adding the hybrid option, Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bowe.
Thank you. Motion passes by zero.
Okay. And so what I was going to say is, I know we haven't had a break yet, but I do know the district attorney is still on with us for her item. So if you guys are okay, I'd like to go with that item and then we'll take a lunch break before we hit the public hearing. So yes, our next item comes to us from.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes, sir.
Can you let the people that are waiting for the next meeting know when we will be coming back or what your lunch break is expected to be like? Are we planning on coming back at 1:15 or something? So that they don't have to wait for this to hear?
Well, we'll see how long this, how long, do you, let me, how long do you suspect this item will take of yours?
Eleven minutes.
I was gonna say less than that, but I'll take eleven.
Okay, so eleven. So then, yeah, so come back at 1:15 then yours, uh, would be reasonable for the folks in?
I'm just trying to let the other people have an idea so they don't have to sit here.
Now that, believe me, that's fine. I was trying, everything else has gone lots longer than I.
I know, I know we're mesmerizing, but.
Right. So, yes, Maggie Fleming, you now have, uh, six minutes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the board considering this item. We actually have two. We were trying to do some of our personnel covered in one agenda item. So we have increasing four of the attorneys to the top step, which is for E, as well as the Tom Pinto, uh, he's about to retire. We have not really been able to recruit uh, and fill that position. And so obviously we would like for the waiver of the 180 days so that he can come back and, uh, stay with us and help train the new person that we hire. With regards to the attorneys, I think I, you know, summarized there the issues. This is partly to, to make it, you know, sort of equitable throughout the office as well as with other county departments who have attorneys similarly situated who are paying those attorneys for E. Um, we've only done 18 trials this week. We're starting, I'm sorry, this year, we're starting our 19th right now. Perhaps some of you have seen some of our press releases, but what I've really noticed is because of COVID, we've, we've really been impacted. We're trying homicides, uh, we're trying sexually violent predator. We've tried eight strike cases. Uh, a number of the felonies that we're trying to have strike priors and pretty significant felony triers. We've only tried three misdemeanor DUIs driving under the influence because of the nature of bringing in 60 jurors to hear a case, we're really carefully deciding, uh, what goes forward. So the caseloads are very, very serious and violent that these attorneys are handling. Uh, all of them are carrying homicides, uh, and carrying them, you know, as the first chairs. And they're, they're doing a really outstanding job. They've been very successful, very diligent. So this is uh, an effort to, as I say, make their salaries consistent with what other attorneys carrying these caseloads are, both here in Humboldt County as well as in other areas. And then as for Tom, I think that's sort of, um, self-explained in the, in the agenda item. I wanted to be available if anyone had questions. And I did want to also say, we have vacancies. We initially wanted to have a vacancy because we are concerned about the downturn in the economy with COVID. So all of the divisions here, we kept as someone left that position vacant. So because we never want to be in a position of having people be told, hey, we don't have, you know, can't budget for you. You'll have to leave this year. Um, but what we've also seen is because of COVID, it's harder to fill our positions. So I'm actually down two attorneys right now. So in addition to everything else, the attorneys that we have are picking up, um, a significant caseload from other attorneys. So our budget can, uh, completely handle the increase in salaries that these four attorneys would receive. Yes, Rex?
Yeah, I, and the four attorneys that Maggie, I think we all see them quite often. I think, I think we refer to them, I do, as the young guns, but they've backed from five or six years ago when Slash won his first case to what he's evolved into upstairs. Those four are very respected. They're doing, they've got great numbers and they're filling a lot of holes. And this, this ask is so minimal. I mean, I, I, less than $30,000 for, for, for all four attorneys combined. And I don't know if we've seen any lawyer bills. Yeah, we did last week. This is, this is minimal. So I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's, uh, or, um, waive the 180-day wait period and be able to move, um, the four attorneys up the steps required by the, or asked of by the district attorney.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, and I see Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up.
Thank you. Through the chair, um, hi Maggie. So I'm a little bit new to this kind of stuff, so I wanted to ask just a question if we were approving, uh, salary step for the person or the position? So if?
For the?
For the what?
For the person.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that call. All right, um, we'll go to the public, public comment. And we do have one hand up. I think this was from the previous item, so zero, three, two, six, if you have a comment on the, um, DA's item, this is your opportunity to comment.
Yeah, this is Genevieve. Uh, anyway, I will appreciate, um, Michelle Bushnell saying that we get going on January. It started. This is anything else, I appreciate that with a hybrid.
Okay, thank you. That, we voted on that one already. All right, thank you. All right, um, I don't see any other hands up, so.
Yep, four more minutes.
We'll go back to the board. Well, then talk, uh, more about Slash. Sounds like a name for a, a band or something. I was trying to figure out. No other comment? I guess we're ready to vote. Nikki, please.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Yes, and if anybody wants to hear the story about Slash, I love telling it.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrona?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will take a lunch until 1:15 and we will come back. See you then. Well, we have four or five. We might get this person here. All right, so we are back. Thanks for waiting, everybody. And, um, so we have, um, our next item is a public hearing. And it comes to us from Planning and Building, and it's regarding a conditional use permit modification. Um, prior to opening the public hearing, I'd like to ask any board members if they have had any ex parte communication they wish to share with the rest of the board. Supervisor Wilson, then Bushnell, or, actually, Bushnell had her actual, the, the proper hand up first, so. Supervisor Bushnell, then Wilson.
So I, um, had someone in my office last Friday or two Fridays ago that is a landowner, um, that is opposed to this project. I did not discuss anything. I just listened.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I've had, um, probably two phone conversations with Mike Zapigno, uh, related to the process, uh, and his, you know, trying to understand the process of this. And he's one of the neighbors that opposed the project, um, and they refer him to staff. Um, also, uh, a few emails to the same, uh, uh, subject matter, and I forwarded those on.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? I have not had any. All right. And, um, before we go on, I would ask and see if staff could reach out to Supervisor Madrona to make sure he's able to get on. Um, so, all right. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and I'll turn to Director Ford for a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Bass and members of the Board of Supervisors. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. Joining me is Rodney Yandel and Cliff Johnson. This is a little bit different. Mr. Yandel will go into the specifics of it, but this is a modification to an approved, um, conditional use permit. The modification is, uh, request really goes back to an action that the board took on appeal. And this is why it's coming directly back to the board rather than through the normal process of a, a modification. So it's a little bit unique, um, but, uh, I think it is appropriate that, given the fact that what's being requested, uh, goes directly back to the issue at hand when the board originally took action on this. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Yandel to, uh, present the project.
Thanks, John. My name's Rodney Yandel, Senior Planner, Humboldt County Planning. Good afternoon, Board, Chair Bass. I'm gonna attempt to, um, share my screen here. Did I get it?
Yep, looks like it's working.
All right, then. Okay, as John mentioned, this is a, um, Rocky Costa conditional use permit modification. Um, a little bit of background here. The original conditional use permit approval allowed for relocation of a cannabis, a new cannabis project proposed on APN 516211025 due to neighborhood concern in the Blue Lake community planning area. It was decision of the board on March 16th, 2021 to allow for a 20,000 square foot entitlement be relocated to a location yet to be identified within the county. As part of this approval, a covenant to restrict commercial cannabis from being cultivated on the subject property was recorded on the title of the property. This modification proposes the cultivation take place on the original parcel, APN 516211025 as initially proposed. As the applicant and the county were unable to secure a location for the 20,000 square foot entitlement. This is, um, location of the proposal. It's at the terminus of Warren Creek Road in the Glendale, Blue Lake area. The project proposed today on the original parcel is 10,000 square feet of full sun dry farm cannabis cultivation in prime agricultural soil with 1,000 square feet of propagation greenhouse area. Irrigation water will be sourced from a 25,000 gallon rainwater catchment system to be used for propagation and transplant. And water usage will not exceed that 25,000 gallons annually. Drying and curing will occur onsite and all other processing will be conducted offsite at a licensed processing facility. All farm labor will be performed by family members and power will be provided by PG&E. Also, part of this project includes reconfiguration of an access driveway into the easement on the parcel, which I'll show on the next slide. Here you see the current access to the neighboring parcel, the transects, the subject parcel. The easement is actually here on the northern property boundary, and the applicant proposes to relocate this access into that existing easement. This is a site plan for the proposal with the full sun outdoor cultivation located here, the propagation area located here, water storage features here, and this is the large garage that's used to, uh, channel the rainwater into the tanks. Um, staff is aware that this project had some controversy associated with it and some accusations from things in the past regarding the property. But from, uh, a planning perspective and a land use, um, perspective, the project as proposed does check a lot of the boxes for approval. For that reason, staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution approving the Rocky Costa CUP modification, effectively rescinding the triple R entitlement and the associated covenant on the property and allowing for the project as now proposed. There are some alternatives. One would be to adopt a resolution that we drafted, denying the, the requested modification, which revokes conditional use permit PLN 12176 CUP and allows for the removal of the associated covenant from the property. Another alternative would be to adopt neither resolution and, and deny this modification request, which would result in no change to the approved conditional use permit. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. And, um, Director Ford, I do see we have, uh, Mrs. Costa on here. Uh, should I give you, um, we'll go to the applicant, appellant, Mrs. Costa. Um, a few moments to share any information that you believe we don't have or that we should have.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'd first like to thank the board for hearing us today. I second what an earlier caller said about being grateful for the time. Uh, and I'd like to especially thank Director Ford for his patience, taking the time to review the documents and for his support. Um, you are about to hear a multitude of persons do not know us make claims against myself and my family because they ultimately do not want commercial cannabis in the ag zone that exists past their neighborhood. After arguing the road, the smell and their family values, values, their last resort is to use slander and fear against, as a weapon against us. They have admitted that their campaign to discredit us personally was worth the outcome. And regardless of the fact that by their admission, it got out of hand and it went too far, they stood by their claims because they want to control the Ag Valley, which is several hundred acres. You'll also hear persons who know us speak well of our character, our compassion and our generosity to our community. Rocky and my families each go back many generations in Blue Lake. We own a home next to the Presbyterian Church in Blue Lake and two in Eureka. This is a, a book, I don't know if you can see it. It's about Blue Lake. It came out on Blue Lake Centennial. Our aunt wrote it. And the Costin Clark families occupy a multitude of pages there. Both of our families go back quite a ways. Uh, every person in the petition against us has an Arcata address where with massive community opposition, a five acre mega grow was recently approved and permitted in a dense neighborhood and very near Pacific Union School where I attended K through three. Our brother's prime agricultural, agricultural parcel in the Mad River Ag Zone is well away from these Arcata neighbors and only 10,000 square feet of open air cultivation. That's less than a quarter of an acre compared to the five acres that was permitted in Arcata with reasonable objections. When Humboldt County's estimated 6 to 10,000 farmers were offered triple R solutions, the county knew they couldn't place those farmers. Folks like ourselves were shut out of the ag land and places like the Arcata bottoms, if they were going to be approved for cannabis, should have been zoned for triple R, not mega grows that extract Humboldt County's economy. Our family has its own land, and by Humboldt's triple R solution, we should never take a small farmer away from their own opportunity. The terms of the agreement regarding the government covenant were dismissed. And although I asked for these documents several times, they were only released to me after the covenant was expedited. In fact, they were released the very next day after it was too late to stop it. When we were forced into the covenant, we tried to make the best of it. The planning department was not able to help us as directed, and the farming opportunities in the foothills were not a dry farm option. They were not green. Our family is committed to what we in the cannabis community refer to as a green Renaissance. And our Warren Creek community property can serve that mission. Director Ford has seen the detailed timeline of these events, which were assembled from county records, and he can speak to it. It will be your job to decide which is a real assessment. And when you sort through the claims made against us and find most of them to be irrelevant or untrue, can the others honestly hold merit? Also, I strongly support the Zoom type option for these meetings. Our in-person meeting at the planning, in our in-person planning commission meeting was to be on February the 6th, 2020. It was canceled at the last minute due to illnesses of the planning commissioners. I was to be at that meeting, as was a number of faithful supporters to our cause. When it was rescheduled for the following month, I had a surgical appointment in San Francisco. I could have been at that meeting if we have the Zoom type option. And a lot of this would have, never have happened if I had been able to attend and, and help out with the confusion. In the future, I hope that you keep the Zoom platform. It makes a big difference to people that are faced with the type of opposition that we had in the room on that day. The planning chambers does need better rules. It was a crazy melee. It was, should have never gone like that. And, and rules and opportunities to be able to be present are very important to the whole community, especially those in the outlying areas. Thank you. And, uh, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. My husband is sitting next to me, Rocky, and my son Rocky is, who is a fabulous young man, environmental farmer, is in the next room, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Laura. And, um, we'll be sure to, um, um, ask questions if the supervisors do mention, um, mention anything. Okay, I'm confused. So far, Bob Bronkle's showing up as John Ford. Is there, I was like, can someone help me here?
I'm sorry, Chair. I sent, uh, Mr. Bronkle, um, the link I had because he didn't have a link.
That makes sense. Okay, I was gonna say, you know, you've got a, you've got an impersonator. So, um, Mr. Director, uh, Deputy Director Bronkle, did you have anything you wanted to add before we start our conversation?
I'm simply here to go ahead and answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
All right, thank you. All right. Any board members have any questions at this time, or should we just go straight to public comment? Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, thank you. Through the chair. Um, when this came before us, uh, a while back, we, I thought, uh, you guys were going to identify some properties elsewhere that was acceptable. Did that not happen? Did that not happen?
Good, Chair.
Yes, please.
We did work at identifying some. We talked about a particular piece of property that had a property owner with some issues, and then there was another piece of property where they were assembling RRRR sites. But unfortunately, that particular piece of property was, they were stacking RRRR sites, and they are working on doing the environmental document. And that was not ready to proceed. It was hard to find a site that would be affordable and not, and small enough to be purchased and not within a community plan area. The sites that, like that, that would normally have been available had largely all been acquired. I will say, we have around 20. Mr. Johnson, if I'm wrong on this number, correct me, but around 20 RRRRs that are currently waiting to be landed someplace. And so there's a number of those that don't have homes. So it just became a difficult process to find a place.
Okay, thank you, Director Ford.
Did you have your hand up? I didn't know Clip was trying to say something. Nope, okay. I don't see any other questions right now. If you are listening or watching on a video somewhere and you want to comment on this item, please press star nine now to raise your hand so we know how many people may be interested in talking. Because if you don't do it as soon as possible, you might accidentally be missed. Okay, I saw a flood of hands go up, so that's good. All right, so we will go, our first commenter is going to be, well, actually, I should actually go through the rules or the process. There'll be three minutes for each commenter to speak, and you'll have a, you'll hear a sound when you have 30 seconds left. And then when you hit three minutes, I will, the phone will be muted. So don't take it personally. We try to keep it consistent for everybody when possible. So at this point, we will go to 0265. And if you're 0265, press star six to unmute. Also, if you happen to be watching this on a video, please do turn the volume on your video down so you don't get caught in the time delay. All right, so yes, 0265, welcome.
Hi, my name is Michael Fields. I live on Warren Creek Road, and I want to state that I am in opposition to the Costa's appeal for a commercial cannabis grow at the end of our road. I was part of the neighborhood group that met with the Costa's and Planning Director Ford. We thought we reached an agreement. And in fact, when it was brought before the Board of Supervisors, that agreement was confirmed, and there was a covenant signed that the property in question could never be used for a commercial grow. Now, here it is again. Did all of those agreements mean nothing? This is ridiculous. You know it, and we know it. We stand with each other as neighbors from very different backgrounds to share a common belief that this project, for the myriad reasons stated, is not right for this place, something you all in the Planning Commission agreed with. And now, in true Kafkaesque fashion, it seems like we must revisit it. We remain united in our opposition. And I know there will be testimony from cannabis advocates who do not live here, know none of us, do not know this road, and many probably don't even know the Costa's. At the last public hearing, all kinds of insinuations were hurled at the people on this road. It was almost suggested that we have a monthly neighborhood, "We Don't Like the Costa's" meeting, where after our ritual viewing of Reefer Madness, we discuss ways to mess with the Costa's lives. That, again, is ridiculous. You know it, and we know it. We wish everyone well. We are not anti-cannabis, but we are opposed to this project. The land in question is in the Blue Lake community planning area, and the Planning Commission initially rejected this proposal because it was, one, not compatible with the community; two, it could not, it could be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. I'm aware that cannabis, the issue as a whole is complex. There are all kinds of passionate viewpoints within and without the county government. I am speaking to you as one of many people who live on Warren Creek Road, a road we privately take care of, in a neighborhood we deeply care about, who stand together in opposition to this project. It is my deepest hope that this appeal is denied. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you, Michael. Our next person is 8278. If that's you, press star six to unmute, 8278. Right, 8278, are you there? Press star six to unmute. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Lee, and I have lived on Warren Creek Road for four decades. You're going to hear a lot today about virtues of organic farming and preference for artisanal versus corporate cannabis production, but we're really here to decide if this previous resolution of the matter should be reversed. The decision before was a win-win-one today, but today it will be a zero-sum win-lose. We're here because the Costa's are unhappy with the March 2021 decision. If it's reversed today, they're going to be happy, but there's going to be a whole lot of us who are very unhappy. We were incredulous when this matter was brought up again. At the September 30th meeting, the planning department staff joined the Costa's in seeking to convince us to lift our objections to the project. They did not succeed. We have not received any satisfying explanation as to why the department has changed its position from recommending to the board that permit be denied to recommending that it now be approved. In subsequent discussions, the senior planners suggested that the Costa's may turn out to be the best neighbors we've ever had. While given our current neighbors, that seems a remote possibility, the statement was not only incredibly condescending, but it was also inappropriate. It seems that when it comes to cannabis projects, the planning department does not limit itself to analyzing, evaluating, and applying state and local land use regulations, but has now moved on to directly advocating for these projects while dismissing almost entirely the concerns of the communities they're affected by. A few weeks ago, the Planning Commission referred to cannabis fatigue, and boy, do we have it. The resurfacing of this project has been extremely distressing for all of us and has significantly undermined our trust in local government. The board could go a long way to restoring that trust by upholding its previous finding that the end of Warren Creek Road is not an appropriation for the Costa's, or anyone else for that matter, to cultivate commercial cannabis. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Our next person is 5018. So if you're 5018, press star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yeah, John Friedenbaugh, General Manager at Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. We submitted a letter to the Planning Commission about this project on February 6th, 2020. Copy is included in your packet, Attachment 4, page 66. I draw your attention to paragraph three of that letter. Our water district has a water transmission line and several appurtenances along Warren Creek Road. Many are located in the turnouts that are referenced in the road analysis report. If the supervisors approve this project, we request that you condition the project such that the applicant must confer with our district prior to conducting any improvements to the turnouts along Warren Creek Road to ensure they do not damage our water infrastructure. Thank you.
Right, thank you, John. Our next speaker has the last four digits of 5024. If you're 5024, press star six to unmute.
I am here. You can hear me?
You do that.
Okay, my name is John Murray, ex-public works director and a former life 20 years ago. There's a couple of things here. One is, Mrs. Costa irritates me every time she says, "We've been here so long, I can trace my roots back to L.K. Wood, who was here before she was." And the Wood family used to own the property under discussion, but that has nothing to do with any of this, so I'm not going into that any further. My main point is, when this was dealt with a couple months ago, a recorded document, or a document was recorded that said, "We will never grow there again." At a meeting with the planning department, they thought, "Oh, we'll just, we'll unrecord that." In my 28 years with the county, I'd never heard of unrecording a document. And it just, it's there. It's, I don't know how you unrecord a document. That document says they will not grow on that parcel forever. So even though I sent my letter in about that well in advance of this meeting, I see nothing in their staff report that addresses that. And when I asked Mr. Ford about that, he says, "Oh, we do it all the time." Has county council been involved? No, county council's not involved in that. So that question still stands. I don't think you can unrecord a document because that is a promise that it will not occur, and something, somebody could have bought an adjacent parcel in the meantime, "Oh, they can't grow there." And now it's, you're gonna just pull the rug out from under that. So that's my point. So, thank you.
Right, thank you, John. Great, next speaker is 7035. You're 7035, press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, I just want to say one thing. We have one landline, and I have a comment to make. And then I want to hand the phone to my wife, and I talked to the clerk of the board yesterday. She, that's the process. So when I'm done, I'll hand it to my wife.
Actually, sir, I'll let you do three minutes if you want, and then she can have three minutes as well, since you're two individuals calling in, since you let me know ahead of time.
Right, that's what it is, yeah. Well, thank you very much. Cell service is not working. First off, I want to be clear about our opposition to the Costa grow is not based on being anti-cannabis. Or as stated by Mr. Ford and Laura Costa at a recent meeting, our objections being cannabis smell and our road. Our number one objection is based on the health, safety, and welfare of our community and the project being incompatible with the community. Our community feeling safe is of utmost importance. This has been our consistent position from the very beginning of this long process. For this hearing, we submitted a denial petition signed by 65 members of our community. We also sent a letter which provides a chronological timeline of incidents reported from 2003 to 2021. I am not here to relitigate our report. We stand by what we've said and written to be accurate accounts of these incidents. We had a formal process to vet these incidents. Any incident would only be accepted if the person reporting was involved in the incident or had been an eyewitness. Our report is a historical look at the Costa's mismanagement of this property and shows what we as neighbors have had to endure for many years. Ours is not a NIMBY response. It is an "it did happen in my backyard" response. Going back to the September 9th, 2020 meeting that Director Ford facilitated, we left the meeting, when we left the meeting, we all thought we'd come up with a win-win solution. We gave the Costa's permission to move their permit to a site in Honeydew. They said they'd be working with an older property holder in partnership for a 20,000 square foot grow. It was a win for the Costa's as a double the size of the grow they had proposed for Warren Creek. In exchange, we asked for a covenant agreement stating that there could not be a commercial grow on the Warren Creek property by Rodney Costa or any other subsequent owner. The court was recorded and was stipulated in the board resolution dated 16/21. It is unfortunate the Costa's have found a property they can transfer the RRRR to. That is their problem now. We asked the board to deny the Costa's permission and honor our covenant. I'll now hand the phone to Kathleen. We're still on, right?
Yes, and I'm gonna, I'll start the time over for your wife. So you have three minutes.
Hello?
Hi, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. This is Kathleen Tepeno. At our last meeting with Mr. Ford, Laura Costa stated that they wanted to be good neighbors. On the contrary, the good neighbor factor as yet has not been an element that has been established. As the old saying goes, "Action speaks louder than words." For over 18 years, throughout all the turmoil that has occurred on the Costa property and the spillover and negative repercussions experienced by the neighbors, there has been absolutely no contact or outreach on their part. No attempt to build bridges or to mend fences, just silence. Our trust has been diminished. This pattern of disregard for the health, safety, and welfare of our community has been a constant. This exemplifies why the Costa project is not compatible with our community. Over the past two years during the permit process, the Costa's have had ample opportunities to reach out to the residents in an effort to show goodwill and explain their wishes to be good neighbors. But instead, they have opened an even deeper chasm with their insults and contempt. 65 members of our community signed a petition opposing this commercial grow in our neighborhood. I think it is clearly at this point why. And as a side, Debbie Stamper has been putting flyers for our 4th of July celebration and our Christmas party events in the Costa's mailbox for over 15 years. They have never responded or attended. I thank you for the time that you've allowed us, and I wish you a good day. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And if you are listening and you want your comment on this item, please do press star nine so we know you're in the queue. And we will go to Joe. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, I am Joseph Aroni, also known as Sweet Leaf Joe. I am the founder and director of the Sweet Leaf Collective. I also, for, okay, and so I've been through this entire process myself. I am here to support the Costa's in their request to get a cannabis cultivation permit. My project, the Sweet Leaf Collective, has been working with low-income, terminally ill patients in California, helping them to access free medical cannabis. The Costa's, once they do get their permit, will be donating to our cause and helping patients all over the state. This is very important right now as many small cultivators are closing due to the dramatic loss with farms and the amount the price has dropped in the industry. I request that they get their permit. And I was also attending the in-person meeting, the original one. And to hear people say that it was a win-win situation, I really think only characterizes the side that does not want this permit to happen. It was not a win situation for the Costa's at all. To make them sign a covenant that no cannabis can be cultivated on that property is not a win. That's a loss. So again, I am just here to support the Costa's and their request for a permit. And I would really like to thank everyone, the planning department and Board of Supervisors for revisiting this because they, I believe, and I saw this firsthand, I believe that they were very unfairly treated at that in-person planning department meeting. So thank you for your time, and have a wonderful day.
Right, thank you, Joe. And again, if you're interested in speaking, please do press star nine so we know you're here. 7464 is our next commenter. So if that is you, press star six to unmute. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Marcille Weber-Brainy. This project is in a community planning zone, and as such, is not compatible with the neighborhood and will present as a detriment to the health, welfare, and safety of the people on Warren Creek Road. We have been called NIMBYs by correspondents in favor of this project. Few of them living near here will be impacted, but it will have longstanding negative repercussions to residents. I was relieved when I was informed that this permit was to be relocated to a more appropriate site. The property is owned for agriculture. However, it is an area that has become predominantly residential with six separate households within less than a quarter mile from the proposed cultivation. proposed cultivation site. This area is populated by a family, by a family with small children, working couples, professionals and retirees. My major concerns include during the summer months, the wind blows east to west, contrary to what might be written in the permit, directly towards the Weberg family home. I live there, I still live there twice a week. My elderly mother, as well as my sister and myself, are allergic to pollens and other airborne irritants. Odor will be a major issue during the months the crop is maturing. And our property on the eastern border of the proposed site is lightly fenced and vulnerable to anyone attempting to access an open air grow illegally. This is an additional security risk as it puts anyone on our river property in potential danger. Our community has personal experience with the slow response time for law enforcement with road. On the site plan, the committee proposes to move the end of Warren Creek Road to the southern fence line. The Weberg Trust, my family, has a fifty-foot deeded right through the site. The beginning of the road where it intersects on the, the other property is within the fifty foot. However, it does go off to the side. We have always accessed lower properties through this, and it's actually the end of Warren Creek Road. It's a hundred-year-old, the road has been there forever. The beginning of the current driveways within, where the plan places a new access point in the property would not be feasible as it provides no connection to where the Warren Creek Road and Western Side, nor would a sixteen-foot, ten-inch access be acceptable. The site plan would require a major revision to be viable. Finally, you will have heard or you will hear firsthand account of how Rocky Costa himself made aggressive and intimidating statements to my elderly mother. I didn't really want to talk about this, but she is so frightened. He had to be told during the planning commission meeting to stop addressing the Warren Creek Road residents. And his actions at the time fed her fear of retaliation by him and other members of the family. No, at no time since those incidences, Rocky or Laura made any overtures of goodwill towards my mother or any other members of our family. After the resolution of three sixteen as well as signed covenant, we felt a lifting of that fear when accessing our lower property. Please stand by the planning commission's decision to deny it and uphold the resolution number twenty-one thirty-one, which denied this project on this site based on its incompatibility with the neighborhood and potential detriment to ourself, our health, welfare and safety. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mrs. Costa, we don't have any comments right now. So, and, and letting people know, drop, calls are being dropped. So if you are dropped, we'll try to do our best to get you on as quickly when you call back. Zero seven three one, I know you were dropped, but you actually had your hand up quite a while ago, so, oops. Did they, this ever again? Okay, there you are, zero seven three one, press star six to unmute. All right, try this one more time, press star six to unmute, zero seven three one. We will come back to zero seven three one. Seven six zero seven, and anyone else interested, please do raise your hand now by pressing star nine so we know. Zero seven three one. Wait, I just called that one and they didn't work there, seven six zero seven.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, my name is, oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yep. Sorry.
All right.
We accidentally, um, hold on, everybody. We're gonna go, I guess, seven six zero seven, we'll come right back to you, the zero seven three one actually muted at the same time and they were called first. So we'll be right there. Um, so zero seven three one. You have three minutes.
Oh, hello.
You have three minutes to comment. Okay, the mute's back on, so. This is a lot of fun. So I believe we were then at, Nikki is at seven six zero seven, that was unmuted that we remuted, but now we'll unmute. Let's try that, are you still there, seven six zero seven?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello.
Oh, so I would like to, let's, Myrna, can you hear me, Myrna?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, can, can we please let the zero seven three one caller speak? This is Myrna Weberg and she's live and ready to go.
Okay, make sure she doesn't do it this time. All right, thank you.
Oh, gosh.
Great.
Hello, I just, hello.
You have three minutes.
I'm struggling with modern technology. I'm eighty-two years old. I live out here on Warren Creek Road alone since my husband's demise. I really am opposed to this possibility that the marijuana grow will be put out here on, on the end of the road. We have immediate Mad River access and I'm very concerned that people would be able to come up from the river. It would, it would be an attraction for people that were looking for an easy score. I just don't feel that this is compatible with our area. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go back to one, yeah, I think we're on one six two six.
No, we're on seven six zero seven, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now everybody, there you go, welcome.
All right, here we go. My name is Sam Sin, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my wife, Amethyst Weberg, and the Weberg Family Trust. Our family owns and occupies parcels on both sides of the Costa parcel where the proposed grow location is. And we've owned and occupied these parcels and actively used the easement that passes through the Costa's parcel since the late sixties. It seems to me that the relocation permit is a perfect solution and quite frankly, keep doing your work to find a new place to have your grow take place. A petition against approval of this permit has been signed by sixty-five individuals from the Warren Creek Road community. All sixty-five know that if the permit is approved, our health, safety and welfare will be compromised. Clearly, there's truth behind all the previously reported negative, frightening and intimidating interactions that have been instigated by the Costa's and their tenants that they've allowed to occupy their parcel over the years. You don't just get sixty-five people to sign a petition. So obviously, there's great concern due to the reputation of the Costa's. For myself in particular, as Marcyel mentioned, at the first hearing regarding this permit in twenty nineteen, I stood and spoke on behalf of Myrna Weberg, Debbie Stamper and the Weberg Family Trust. And at the close of the meeting, Rocky turned directly to Myrna and I and stated that he would move the easement anyway, in an aggressive and intimidating way. Myrna, our grandmother, is already concerned about the activity on the Costa parcel, but that comment from Rocky caused our family's fears to grow tremendously. And Myrna deserves to feel safe at home, now we all do. If this permit is approved, I fully expect that the Costa's will do whatever they want on this parcel regardless of the restrictions outlined in their permit. And the burden will be upon us, the neighbors, to monitor, report concerns and take legal action after they've already broken laws in order to maintain the health and safety and welfare of our community. The Weberg family will continue to live on our land for generations to come. My wife grew up on Warren Creek Road. We have plans to build a house and live on our family's property. This is our homestead, it's our right to live here without fear of serious health, safety and welfare concerns that will exist if the permit is approved. I respectfully ask that you deny this permit as you did before due to the same reasoning. The Costa's cannot be trusted to operate in a legitimate way with respect for the law and for the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next one is six, one six two six. Press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, supervisors. This is Dave Kinzer. Me and my wife live on Warren Creek Road. Having served on a school board for a local elementary school for fourteen years, I'm fully aware of the copious amount of paperwork that you must read through in an attempt to understand the opposing points of view of this project. As a school board member, one of my actions that I was most proud of was I read every single piece of pertinent information related to an upcoming meeting. I realize that you are in this situation, there is a multitude of letters written regarding this controversial topic. I certainly hope that you found the time in your busy schedules to apply due diligence and thoroughly read all submitted material. Having done so, you must have noticed the following points. Not a single letter submitted to you requesting you allow this marijuana permit was from any residents who actually live on Warren Creek Road. In contrast to that point of major significance, every single letter recommending that you deny this permit was submitted to you by individuals who grew up on Warren Creek Road or those who certainly live here, currently live here. You also have our petition with at least sixty-five signatures from our residents and family members who oppose the approval of this permit. We are most definitely a community and a neighborhood that goes back to the late teen, late eighteen hundreds. We all know each other, we help each other, we gather together on various holidays and we cooperate with each other to keep the neighborhood safe. A final point is that this last year, following the board of supervisors denying this permit, many neighbors have noticed a decrease in traffic and a significant increase in neighbors and visitors enjoying the road, whether it be walking, bike riding, or just standing around socializing. In conclusion, to be clear, nothing has changed regarding our reasons for requesting that you deny the modifications of a conditional use permit on the Rodney Costa property. We are unable to dismiss the more than twenty years of threatening and intimidating behavior and poor stewardship of the land that accompanies this parcel. Because of this past and recent history, we have little trust or faith that any positive outcomes will be realized if this permit is approved. We thoroughly strongly request, we strongly request that you deny the Rocky Costa commercial cannabis permit and retain the recorded current covenant. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I see two hands that are still raised. So if you're planning on calling in, do, do so now, you may not get your chance again. So we will go to two seven eight four. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, my name is Wendy Cornberg and I wanted to call in support of this project. I, unfortunately, I will admit that I have not read the entire project. So, you know, I can't speak to some of the, some of the details that are being spoken about. I can, however, give a bit of character witness with Rocky and Laura. I have known both of them for a very long time. Rocky has worked for my elderly mother and helped with many projects and has been nothing but, you know, helpful and has been nothing but helpful and kind to us throughout the many years that we've known them. As far as security goes, well, the planning department has great oversight in these projects. For those of you that live on Warren Creek and maybe have not seen one of these cannabis projects before, there are annual inspections by both the county and the state, as well as the Department of Ag that comes out and assesses our scales and whatnot. I do own a commercial project myself in Southern Humboldt County. And it seems to me that this would actually increase security in your neighborhood and not decrease it. On that note, there are also other easy pickings in Southern Humboldt that would be much easier to get to than this one, as well as others in the neighborhoods around Northern Humboldt County, Mendocino, and indeed across the state. So some of your worries, while I'm sure are very well-founded, seem to me to not be the ones that are addressing actual security issues or fear of robbery and the like that goes along with criminal behavior, but more perhaps about the fact that your neighbors aren't joining you in your activities. I do understand that that can cause, you know, divisiveness and misunderstandings between communities, but perhaps this can come with agreements to go to some mediation or to allay fears so that you don't have to worry about something like a plant growing down the road from you, which really does not hold any danger. There are hundreds and thousands, actually thousands, I should say, of cannabis operations currently cultivating in the state to come all the way up to Northern Humboldt County to try and cross the river, to try and rip off a farm. It's just not a realistic fear anymore. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And we have a zero seven three one, actually, her hand is still up, but she's already spoke, I believe, correct, Nikki?
Yes.
Okay, so we are on our final speaker then, eight zero one five. If that's you, press star six to unmute. Excuse me, I, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Thomas Edrington. I am a local cannabis activist, policy expert. This, this specific case keeps coming up as an example of just a very specific strategy of obstruction that is seen over and over and over in this county. I've detailed it point by point, multiple times in my written comments, and so far, and as I am the last speaker, the, the opposition has deviated not one bit. The, the issues at play here are those brought up when you don't have anything actually to, to grab onto. There's no policy reason, there's, there's no rational reason to deny this permit. And so you find the cases, the, the points that I laid out, laid out for an obstructionist case come into play. Please don't fall for this. This will set an example. Rocky and Laura are a model of the small farms that Humboldt County was attempting to, or has promised to support in this permitting process. Don't let this, this obstructionist strategy continue to lock up our economy by, by hampering these small farms. I think you know better by now. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Actually, when zero, I, zero seven three one was, Hannah was up that wasn't really up because she'd already spoken. And then I had said final speaker, so I'd like to extend that because this is the third time this has been heard and I do know there's at least one more. And I'm just, if you want to talk on this item, press star nine now because once this next speaker is done, I will close public comment. So just so you are aware, you have a few minutes to press star nine. All right, so nine nine seven seven, you got in under the wire, welcome. Press star six to unmute, there you go.
All right, my name is Alonso. I am calling, or I, I just wanted to give a few pointers of my own on this that I was thinking, I've listened in. And I, I'm in support of this project, one hundred percent. I haven't heard anything that's really worthwhile or worth denying the permit about. I hear fears, but no reasoning behind those fears. It feels as though Laura Costa is being persecuted for nothing, honestly. And even when I heard past actions or, or mistrust, I don't believe that individuals' mistrust should be a valid reason for denying the permit. It is up to you all as the Board of Supes to decide. And knowing that the current, hmm, how should I put this? Knowing that the current regulations make sure that no illegal activity is happening and knowing personally just how much goes into making sure that a farm is safe, secure, and what, what exactly, I don't understand, some, they, I hear of health hazards, but there haven't been any cases of health hazards. It would have been stronger to have said allergies as opposed to just health hazards without any reason. I haven't heard anything about a past and river diversion or even just a, a background on the information for, for missed deeds or, or anything. I've, I've spoken with Laura about this project and she seems to be one hundred percent on board and a model citizen for exactly what Humboldt County needs as far as small farms are concerned. That, that's all I wanted to say. And again, it is up to you as the Board of Supes to right or wrong. It's unfair that they have to experience such prejudice without any real backing behind it. So thank you for your time and I hope you all have a good day.
All right, thank you, Alonso. So this officially closes the public comment portion of this item. And I do want to give Mrs. Costa and her team an opportunity to respond or add additional information. And then after that, Mrs. Costa, we will be going to where the board members can ask you questions, but that will be the extent of the conversation at that point. but that will be the extent of the conversation at that point. Supervisor Bushnell, did you want to speak before the applicant had an opportunity to make her last comments?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, who's the Six Rivers Development with their hand up?
He's part of their team.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That's why, you're welcome. All right, so, yes, Mrs. Costa, and it looks like you do have a new member, another member with you as well, so, yeah, if you want to clarify anything or add any additional information, then otherwise, there may be some questions. Yes, go ahead. You're trying to call in? Technical difficulties, I think. She's looking up at the call-in screen, so. It's okay, did you get a chance to call? Ah, look, you're connecting now, so there you go. Just give it a couple of minutes, seconds.
Is her supervisor, I'm sorry, Chair Bass, is her last four numbers, four-six-one-two?
And her name is showing up as Laura Costa on here.
I just had somebody else call in. I didn't know.
That, the gentleman up here, that'd be probably Six Rivers, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Yeah, who's part of their team. Okay, so we're still trying to connect. How about we take, like, a brief five-minute break so Mrs. Costa doesn't feel stressed as trying to get on, because we all know Zoom challenges. That, does that, are people okay with that? Because she's trying to get on and is not connected yet.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes. Six Rivers Development, okay.
In Shield, Six Rivers Development, maybe I can speak a little bit about the project in the meantime, while Ms. Costa is trying to reconnect, if that would be.
Wonderful idea, thank you.
Okay, well, I am mobile as well right now, so hopefully you're receiving me all right, but I wanted to thank you for allowing this hearing to convene today. I know we've been round and round on this project, and, you know, we're hoping to find some clarity and move it to an end point here. I just wanted to kind of recap, you know, some of the things that some of the commenters had suggested regarding this project, and also kind of recap exactly what took place on that community meeting back in 2020. I was asked to attend the meeting by the applicants, both Rocky and Laura Costa, and actually, the truth of that meeting was that I was actually the one that suggested the idea of relocating the project and imposing a covenant as a way to try and come out to some sort of amicable solution to make the community feel good about, you know, not having cultivation happen there in their neighborhood, and also giving, you know, a new life, new breath to the project, so it wasn't dead in the water. This was a goal that we set out optimistic about achieving, but as you may be aware, that the triple R process is very limiting into receiving farms. I personally am in the running, one of those twenty farms for my relocation, which I've had an application turned in for going on six years right now. So the fact is that the opportunity was a goal to try and achieve, that the applicant took advice and recommendations from county staff, as well as Board of Supervisors, to try and pursue that new direction, and they worked diligently to try and accomplish that. And as most of you are probably aware with land use, every property in Humboldt County has its issues, and nothing is cut and dry, and it, it, it just overcomplicated the process. So, that's kind of, I, I, I take on the responsibility. There was never any, any permissions given from any of the community, like, some of these commenters are, are making it sound out like they gave the Costas this opportunity. These community members had no knowledge of even this process until I had even recommended it, and I only recommended it because I found myself in a similar situation with another client of mine, as you guys may be familiar with the Maple Creek Investments Project, which came under very heavy scrutiny from the neighbors. There was very similar complaints, slanderization, false accusations, outright lies, but the, the difference between those projects and why the Maple Creek Investments Project was able to move forward in the direction is because the ownership of that project had additional lands that they could move that project to, which is the key component of the relocation process. So, with that being said, I just want you guys to take that in and put that into context when making this decision. The, the, the community members argue that they're not against cannabis. Well, then what are they against? Because very clearly, it seems like they have a personal vendetta against the Costas due to probably the property mismanagement and the lack of land stewardship that has gone on there, which in no way, shape, or form was either Rocky or Laura Costa's fault. This property was owned by their brother, and in order to, to establish good land stewardship and property management, the, the Rocky and Laura are trying to come in there and do exactly that, be good neighbors. You know, they've, they've, they've mitigated all of these issues in the past regarding tenants and so forth, and now they're trying to, you know, shine, shine up the penny a little bit. I mean, they have to be able to utilize this land in a way, or else, who knows what's going to happen. There's also concerns about, one of the commenters said, how can you undo a covenant? Well, there's concerns that the covenant was actually filed illegally ahead of the Board of Supervisors' decision, so I could refer that out to John Ford or perhaps, you know, county staff to clarify that. So there, there's some inconsistencies with how the whole process actually rolled out. Finally, there's the argument that the project doesn't meet community standards and that it was denied because it doesn't meet community standards, and it's a community safety hazard. The community safety hazard is purely speculative. You cannot say that it will increase concern for community, community safety out there. I do know of a report that happened as recently as a year ago, where out on Warren Creek, two tenants were arrested with multiple pounds of heroin, methamphetamine, fentanyl, guns, so, you know, we look at community safety and what's currently going on out there, and hopefully we could, you know, improve from what that status quo and that bar has been set at. So, you know, I'd just like to say that I approve and support this project. The Costas have always been very kind, hardworking people, I've known them for a while. I'm here for any questions you might have. I've, just come onto this project to, to help facilitate them and try and put it together and bring it back to you guys, but I just wanted to thank you again.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, and we know you, if you have questions, we know you're there, and I just, you, Supervisor Bone, just a moment, please. I see Mrs. Costa now is on three different sites here, so can we hear you? Can you talk? Are you on one?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, good. Okay, so, we're going to give you, like, maybe somewhere between five and seven minutes to, you know, respond, and then we're going to take it to the board, and then there'll be just questions at, at that point, and the board will be deliberating.
Sure, thank you. Regarding the problems out at the property, we have not ever denied that there were problems. We worked diligently with the Sheriff's Office, vehicle abatement, everybody, to try and get those people off of there. Our biggest mistake was not asking the neighbors for help back then, but we wanted to just deal with it. We were, we were just trying to handle a problem. I'm very sensitive to Mrs. Weber. I would love to let them know specifically that female cannabis plants do not have pollen, and the smell is not, they're, they're far enough away. I think that the other ladies, Wendy has also mentioned that. About the road, the, they haven't access through our property. They don't own the place that the road is on, and we're going to provide them a beautiful access that is fenced on both sides with tree roses and fruit trees, and maybe even our chickens and pigs. We have desires to homestead there, too. That has always been the plan, to move out of our Victorian home in Eureka. It's always, always been our plan to, to build us something flat for our senior years, and we would look forward to every bit of being a part of that community. Very early in this process, I reached out to Mrs. Weber. She dismissed the email because she didn't recognize the sender, she says, and, and I'm good with that, I don't understand it because it was sent through the Planning Department, but after that, I was told not to contact any neighbors. I was told specifically not to, and I have email records of all of that, Mr. Ford can verify that for me, that we were told to sit tight and let the Planning Department make its process. Otherwise, I would have gladly reached out to my supervisors, my planning commissioners, everyone, and so probably if we had engaged a consultant, if equity funds had been available early on, we would have maybe been able to engage a consultant that could help with some of these things. But the bottom line is, is that we worked very hard to solve the problems out there, and we are good people. I'm sorry that it is a popularity contest, that's what Director Ford explained to me, and we have done our due diligence to express to you that we are fine people. The reason that there are not local neighbors from that community standing up for this is because we have not asked them to. We have discussed this with several of the neighbors out there, and some of them have their own grows, small grows that are personal, and the last thing they want to do is bring attention to themselves, and the last thing that we want to do is bring attention to them. The other problem is that they're afraid. They're not afraid of us, they're afraid of excluding their own group of neighbors, and politics are politics. There's rights and lefts on every side, but the wrong, and there's wrong, and wrong is keeping us out. We really want to make this our homestead, too. Our brother recently died, my mother is dying as we speak, our family is moving on, their families will move on, they will build homes, we will build homes, and we'll all be fine. The previous caller I know is already looking into a road association out there that'll be handled just by farmers, so. Then the residents that enjoy their agricultural residence, because that ag valley is about three hundred acres, and there are already farms and nurseries in the neighborhood of those sixty people that wrote that petition. They're fighting against cannabis and their fear of cannabis, and there's already a lot of farms out there. If we don't get permitted, someone else will, as Director Ford has already said. The covenant comes off either way, whether because it was rushed through without procedure or because there either won't be a farm there or there will be a farm there, so the covenant's a mute point.
All right.
I have myself an eighteen-page timeline of events that explains everything that happened to us with our planner and the neighbors and the communications, and we have chosen not to put that in the staff report because it's not a pretty thing. It gets messy in there in the back workings of a permit, and I don't think that that was a good way to start out ahead. I am hoping that you're going to approve us, and if we step out of line, then the BCC, the Planning Department, and the state will, will nip it in the bud. We will be on our, especially on our toes because of all of this, and it's just, it's, it's right. It's agricultural gentrification if that neighborhood holds that three hundred acres away from all of us.
All right, well, and I appreciate that, and now we'll go to the supervisors for conversation. Supervisor Bone, you had your hand up.
I'm good. I did, the consultant earlier said that we gave him advice, and I would like it be known, I did not think anything I said was advice, I think we gave him options, which is a big deal, and I would hope he'd know that difference. We, I don't think we can dispense advice, nor are we in a position to, you know, except for Mike or Steve, I can't, I know.
Yeah. Actually, thank you Supervisor Bone, I'm going to go back to staff in case they have, I suspect they may have some clarifications or things they wanted to respond to. Director Ford or Rodney, anything you wanted to add?
I, I don't know that there's anything, we'd have to ask, answer any questions. You, this has been a complicated and, and difficult process, as, as you know. But I, I think that something Supervisor Bone said, I, I don't think that the staff or the supervisors gave advice. We did attempt to develop a solution with respect to the RRR program, and it is worth stating that the covenant is part of the RRR. That was not a separate deal, that's something that comes out of the RRR. The reason that it's appropriate to remove the covenant, if the RRR is revoked, is because there's no longer another permit that exists out there. The, the reason for the RRR is not regulatory, is to put people on notice that that property can't be permitted for cannabis because it's been restored. And, and, and so that, that's just, that's a procedural issue there, but beyond that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson.
Through the chair, if I can have Supervisor Wilson go first, since it's his area.
Sure, Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, I just, a question for Director Ford. Has ownership of this property changed since we last adjudicated this? What has, what has changed in that? It seems like we're being asked to re-adjudicate something we did once before. What's, what's, what's the change in the condition? Is it just the, the fact that, that an RRR has not been located yet? I mean, is that, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, that's the only questions I have.
Ma'am?
Just a moment, Laura, I'm going to Supervisor Bushnell, and then we'll go to you for clarification on if ownership has changed.
I'm seeing you. Through the chair, Director Ford, can you summarize what a planning, a community plan area means?
Sure. Community plan area is an area that's been identified as a specific planning area. Typically, they have individual, as part of the general plan, typically they have specific policies that are relative and applicable only to that particular community area. One of the things that was done relative to the cannabis ordinance is that, due to the, kind of the backlash of, of cannabis farms moving in closer proximity to developed areas, residential areas, per se, is that in two-point-oh, provisions were put in there, one, to require additional permitting discretion relative to cannabis in community plan areas, and also for projects that were authorized under a non-discretionary process, which would be a zoning clearance certificate, that those had to do one of three things, and, you know, those things are as. And, you know, those things are is either enclosed, um, maintain a 600-foot setback from the closest residence or obtain approval of a conditional use permit. This, that is the situation that this application has fallen under. Because it is full sun outdoor, they're not gonna enclose. Um, they are 580 feet, maybe a little bit more than that from the closest residence.
So this application definitely follows, falls under um, that action?
Correct.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Costa, um, are you answering a question that Supervisor Wilson asked? I mean, just really simply, I mean, has the ownership changed? Is that what you were responding to?
It, it has not. One brother has recently passed and the other brother has offered to sell it to us if we have uh, activity there. Of course, if, you know.
I think that's, I think that's good. If we have further, we can ask you some more, but that, that, I think the basics of that. Supervisor Wilson?
Hey, I, I think again, the, my concern with this is that we're re-adjudicating, I hate using that word, but we're really going over the same ground that we went through once before with no fundamental change, other than the fact that there's been, there's been, I say, I would say some difficulty finding a, a place to land for the RRR, but that doesn't mean that it still can't happen. I don't think that the, I wanna say that I, I, I think the Costas are, are as far as I understand, you know, find people and do a lot of good things for folks, but the question has been the, the track record of maintaining um, uh, sense of safety and, and, and um, and uh, you know, good neighbor uh, relations uh, in the past and um, and, and that has really obviously been an issue. Um, and I think it's, it without, I, I think that the, the property ownership is still the same under that, under that, what has happened in the, in the past. And so from my perspective, I don't see why we would change our decision today. Um, because the conditions haven't changed and um, in terms of when we made our decision before. So um, before us are kind of three options. Um, one is to um, uh, choose to, choose to have the application um, be approved. Um, the other is to deny the application, um, which would then remove the, the entitlement that was given through the RRR or the third is to deny the modification request, basically just to, and, which would maintain the status quo, which is that the entitlement still exists and still allowed. And I, 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 from my perspective, I believe that's probably our best option currently. I'm willing to make a motion towards that. Um, but uh, if anyone, if any of their board, other supervisors has um, discussion beyond that, please let, you know, I'm, I'm willing to entertain that.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. I don't see any other supervisor hands up. Um, sorry, Mrs. Costa, we're not asking any questions right now on that. If there's a question, we will definitely direct it to you. Um, this is for supervisors. Any supervisors wish to make a comment? Um, I do not see any hands up. Well, you can make your motion and, and see.
See where it goes. Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny them, to deny the modification request.
Oh, uh, Director Ford, I know he's not seconding it, so uh, we're gonna hold that motion for a moment. Yes, Director Ford?
Yeah, I apologize. We gave you a third option that we did not give you a resolution for. So that would be a motion to den- of intent to deny and then continue to adate certain so that we can bring findings back. And I have heard the findings articulated by Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, that, findings are actually in option two that was given to us. There's a, there's a fairly, you know, there's a list of findings there, but certainly what I'm referencing is probably finding, I think, the three. I don't have it in front of me, but we're three C, excuse me. But the other findings apply as well, so that's, that's probably where I'm, that's where I'm landing on this, but um.
If you'll trust us to prepare the, well, to prepare the resolution, then we can do that.
Well, so long as, yeah, I mean, again, I'm referencing findings, so I think that'll probably help.
So Supervisor Bushnell, and then we'll go back to see if the motion, to clarify the motion. But Supervisor Bushnell had her.
Hold on, I dropped my mouse, sorry. Um, so I'm wondering with uh, um, with that motion, um, Director Ford, does that give them the option still to relocate that?
Yes.
Of course, yes, it does?
Yes.
So it keeps that application open, it doesn't close that application?
Keeps the application active, that is correct.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, thank you, and then Supervisor Bone?
Well, and this is Director Ford. On 2.0, I know health, safety and welfare comes into play. And, and I, and, and I hear concerns and when I see how many people on, you know, BlackBerry and, and Warren Creek and, well, everybody has signed them and I don't know if everybody's signed. I know nobody has signed in favor of it. Does health, safety and welfare of the neighbors come into play in this or their concerns? I mean, I keep hearing that they're misguided, they don't know anything and, I mean, it's, I mean, we had a, it gave us a John Murray day. He came out of the woods twice for us today on two different things, but I, I'm just saying, there's some intelligent people speaking today that have some concerns and they're ongoing concerns and, and, and I, and I know the Costas and I, I've never had any of those incidents with them, but, but I haven't been around them enough to know anything. So I, 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 I would not condone or, 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 or verify that's what I'm going by, but we did have so many neighbors complain or have concerns and I, and, and I heard the concerns of Mrs. Weber's voice and I, I know the emails got screwed up and everything else, but damn, you're driving right by her house. Um, so I'm just, does, does health, safety and welfare come into play on 2.0 on this with as much community concern as we've had?
That is the primary finding, um, that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. And so the finding that the board needs to weigh is, is will this be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare? And I think what we've heard from the neighbors, what they've pretty clearly corrected me on is they, they don't have a problem with the cannabis cultivation. They have a problem with how the property's been managed and if it's managed in the way that it has been in the past and a cannabis farm, they have deep concerns about their safety.
And I, I got the definite idea that they're just scared to death to say, okay, let's see how it goes and then two years down the line go, whoops, you guys were right, it didn't work out that well. So I think that's the concern because they, I mean, we've got incidences back to 2003 of, you know, whatever that, you know, the, if you go by the, the timeframe that we're given on one letter. Okay, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson and then Bushnell?
Thank you, and yeah, I wanna um, respond, I guess, to, to Rex in saying that, that is, what you're expressing is the foundation of what is the finding, um, three C. So I wanna just, you're, you're hitting it there, but also I, I think there's a bit of a difference between this and where we sometimes.
You say I was right?
Yeah, yeah, you were definitely in there.
Damn, let me write that one down.
Right, little on the outside, but not quite enough, there it is. So, but over the plane, I'd say. So the, 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 I guess the difference between this and what we often find in some of these where people are predicting, um, are predictive about maybe what an application might give is that this is a, this is based on a, on, on, on the past specific and that the, the, again, ownership is still, you know, this, in the same space and it's still, it's just, I'm just saying like, that's a little different than, oh, it's a blank piece of property, it's a new person who has no track record or new, not new, that's new people. Because I have to say, it's like, really, it's about the ownership and less about the people. Um, and it's about the, the, the capacity to manage the space and what the track record is associated with that. So, um, there you go. I'm, I'm still hoping that we'll get a second so that we can.
Would you finally restate your motion and then we'll do an official second and then we'll go to Supervisor Bushnell?
I think, I think um, my, my, sorry, it was fairly simple. Let me try and find it here. It was basically.
I, I seconded my new partner in politics, just so you.
There you go, yeah.
Okay, so basically it was what you said, but bringing back the findings.
With, with, yeah.
If I could share, I'm, I'm sorry. What I heard Supervisor Wilson say is to basically use Resolution 1B, um, which was originally written to deny and revoke, but to focus on the finding and evidence in finding number three and specifically three, three, three C to um, follow the public health um, and welfare findings and to support that with the evidence that it's not based upon um, of future speculative concern. It's, it's based upon experience and uh, there's concern with approving um, this modification at this location.
Yes, and so basically, it's basically deny the modification request with, and you, using the findings, all of the findings from, from the, not just that finding, but I was specifically focusing on that finding, but there is uh, five other findings in there as well, I think are relevant.
Okay, so that's with all the findings, not just one. Supervisor Bone, you still, can I second? You still there?
Gonna follow on to the end of the earth, you bet.
Watch out.
Yeah. Um, thank you Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Um, I'm more concentrated on the, uh, planning, the community plan area. Isn't that an, an automatic reason for denial? No, it's not?
No, the, uh, the way the ordinance is structured is to allow discretion um, in, in those rather than be an absolute. And if there is a unicorn location that exists within a community planning area that wouldn't have community opposition, that it could basically be approved.
I sta- I stated my, I stated that wrong. So in a community plan area with so much opposition by neighbors, that could be really significant for denial, right? Or no?
Well, I, I don't know that I would use that as a finding because that may um, kind of put the board in a situation where they establish precedent that may disagree with other actions that have been taken or you may wanna take in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other supervisors have any questions or comments? Supervisor Madron, did you have any questions that you wanted to?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I, I did wanna say John Murray is watching and apparently I saw an email go across the screen. My hair is disappearing in, into the thin air, it's because of these fake, fake backgrounds that Zoom has and you should be happy that you retired when you did because, yeah, it's weird and it distorts things. All right, so I see no more board members, hands up. Um, can we please have a roll call vote, Nikki?
Uh, yes, um, so I, I actually, I'm sorry, but I do need a little clarification on that motion. Can you restate that for me Supervisor Wilson?
Or I can, I can do that. It, the motion is to deny the modification request. Uh, and, and direct staff to come back with um, uh, a resolution, is that right? Uh, uh, using findings from um, John, I mean, from our, from the resolution to deny.
Oh, so the, the one resolution was to revoke the permit. What I had heard you say previously is to use the findings from that resolution to just support denial.
Yes.
And, and so we don't need, if, if you're satisfied with that, we don't need to come back.
Okay.
Uh, so your motion would be to deny the modification request based upon the findings and evidence in Resolution 1B and direct staff to modify the action to simply deny the modification request.
Nikki got that all, I'm sure.
I did, actually. I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, now for the vote. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yeah.
All right, great, passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you, and that, you're now closing that, that hearing? And I believe we have one item left, which is closed session. So I'd like to ask County Council Billingsley to brief us on closed session.
Thank you Chair. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, it's the intention of the board to meet in closed session to consider public employee appointment for the position of Director of Human Resources slash Risk Manager.
All right, thank you. We'll go back to public comment on this item. There are no hands up, so we will go back to, um, take a five-minute break, maybe? Alicia? Okay, I'll take a five-minute break and we'll go back in, in about five minutes. I mean, on the other screen.
For now, it's already happened, so.
Great, well, then in that case, um, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes Chair, on item M1, there is no reportable action.
Thank you, thank you Steve for joining me on here. Um, that will be adjourned.